I just want to make a point here before the meeting starts. If you plan on speaking during public comment, we would like for you to fill out a speaker card. So, thank you.
He'll be. Hey. Oh, my goodness. Planning and zoning Wednesday, last Wednesday night? You've got to speak four different times.
Speaking of which, when did you all plan this? Wasn't it in the spring?
No, it was at last year this time, in January. I think I'll do it again. Yeah, I think I will. I don't see a whole lot of volunteers, if you know what I mean. Do we have a, the, who is it now? The man, Jack Huffman? Somebody?
This gentleman is not here. He's got Ross Edwood.
Okay.
Charles County Council.
We will start with an invocation. Jack Huffman, is Jack Huffman here? Okay, since he is not, Scott Drachnik has graciously agreed to do the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mike Ehlum. Please stand.
Let's bow our heads and take a moment just to pray silently. I know there's a lot of different faiths that could be represented in this room at this time. Heavenly Father, I come before you, and Lord, we thank you for this holiday season and all that it represents, the birth of your son coming into our world. And Father, our world needs hope and peace and life more than ever. Lord, we lift up to you our community at this time and our community leaders that you would provide them with wisdom. Father, we ask for those that are doing well, that they would remember those who are not doing as well. And Lord, we pray for protection against the virus and all the uncertainties of things that are happening around us here and across the world. Father, we know that you have a plan, and so we rest easy that you're on the throne. And Father, we ask tonight that you give wisdom, unity, and insight for these servants as they decide what decisions will be happening to help make St. Charles County even better than it is now. Lord, we pray for one another and all those in our need. In Jesus' name I ask all this. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Cronin?
Here.
Councilman Brazel?
Here.
Councilman Ehlum?
Here.
Councilman Hollander?
Here.
Councilman Hammond?
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Here.
Councilman White?
Here.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight is a public presentation by Scott Drachnik, President of the Economic Development Center of St. Charles County. We welcome you.
Shall we pray some more, or just get in?
Got us off to a good start, though.
That's right. Thank you for having me here. I want to thank county executive and the county council and Jennifer George for setting this up. This is my first time back as an alumnus from county staff, and it's been about a year since I was here. And I remember when I was here last time, Steve said, "Any predictions for 2020?" And I said, "Yeah, I think we have a recession coming our way." And a few of the other staff members kind of took me aside and said, "What are you talking about, being Debbie Downer about 2020?" Well, now I want to give you a new prediction. We're going to have a little bit more of a bump to go through the first and second quarter, but the rest of 2021 is going to be all rockets to the engine. It's going to be a lot of good things going on. So, with that said, we have been taking time to go to all of our governmental partners and go over some of the reports and things that have been happening at the EDC and in the community since the board was gracious enough to bring me back for a second tour of duty. And I believe Ashley Fears has this all set up, so we're going to take you through slides, if you can see those here. And this is a slide going all the way back to 1993, and you can recognize some folks that are there, some that are still with us, and unfortunately, some that are not with us at this time, such as Missouri Governor Mel Carnahan and a few other folks, Mayor Brown from St. Peters. But this was all the way back in 1993, when we opened the incubator on Mid Rivers Mall Drive by the Community College. And a lot of things have been happening as we've been working with all of the community, all of the civic groups, and all of the higher ed educational groups and other places to help make this a strong place for all of us to live, which fits in with the mission statement that we have. I remember sitting with Lisa Bowe around 2004, coming up with this at the EDC. But we are a catalyst fostering growth. Those key words, catalyst fostering growth. And how we do that, through the specific core services that we have, there's six of them. So number one, we've got business attraction, then we have our business finance, business incubation, business counseling. We also have community marketing, and we have public policy events. And there are some specific clustered industries that we're focused on. You'll notice one of them that's not on that list, I'm not going to do a raise your hand if you can see what it is, but you can see that we are focused on things that create larger jobs and larger wealth and larger tax base in the area. Love retail jobs. I go to Walmart, just like everybody else, or Aldi or Target, but those are not wealth building jobs. Those tend to be money being sent off somewhere else. But when we make products, when we build something here, when we create software, when we solve issues, this is generating wealth and usually pre- jobs that have higher wages that then become the clients that we all want to go to the Walmarts and the Targets and the Aldys and the other places that we have in our community. And so on this list, you can see the list of what we've been doing and what we've been focusing on because of critical mass. Lastly, you see entrepreneurship, not because it's a federally recognized business classification, but it's bread and butter for what the EDC does, and it cuts across all sectors. There's also been a roadmap. This was part of something that grew out of 2018, when the EDC board hired a consulting group out of Kansas City, and it was the Marx Nelson Firm, and they said, "Hey, the EDC really needs to rebuild and get itself back to a leadership position to be the lead voice in the area, to work to gather all of the leads and manage those together with the cities, and also to be on lead generation, not simply reacting, but also generating those leads and branding for the area." And so we do that with our partners, because there are three shared goals that we all have. We want to see the tax base grow, because that's how we provide the services that our residents expect and want to be in the area. We also have to bring about business investment, and they have to make a profit, otherwise they won't be here, they'll go somewhere else. That's not my call. And then lastly, we also have job creation, because we want good jobs for our residents, and Steve and Jennifer and others have been saying this for a long time, we are a net exporter of our skilled labor force, and we need to bring more of those jobs home. I think the COVID virus and remote access has probably shown a lot more those people can work here, rather than have to cross the bridge. But we have 62%, according to a study pre-COVID, of our folks leaving the area to go work somewhere else. We want them back. And so we've been working to try to do that through different economic development issues. Here you can see through this year, all the way as of just the other day, we had worked on 63 project leads, and those were primarily site selection searches. Almost half of them were manufacturing, about 47%, I think it was 30. Second to that was the area of high tech and data bioscience were things that really was number two. We were surprised. We thought it would have been warehousing, but it wasn't. And then we've got a variety of land deals that are happening because of a really cool mega map that Mike Holbert helped put together there, as Mike put together about two years ago, and we've been using that based on future land use to bring some new land to market. But lastly, I just want to say, Project Can, Project Can, I love Project Can. It was Digicam printing, they came to town, and even though our peers have three or four times our budget and three or four times our staff, this was the key project that was landed in St. Charles, not by the Alliance STL, not by the Missouri Partnership, but by the EDC, working with our roundtable, working with the chamber, working with the local cities. And now there's a new company with $8 million of new investment that opened up here in town, 25 new jobs, and they pay over 100%, 118% of total annual wages. So these jobs are paying in the 50s. These are the kinds of jobs that we want in town, and this company has a great future ahead of it, and I really appreciate the city of St. Charles stepping up. Everybody had a chance to put property in front of them, but that's where they ended up going, and I think our vice chair, Keith, might have ended up working with them a little bit. We gave them a list of three or four or five brokers. They picked Keith, and he did a great job on this particular project. Well, as you can imagine, because of COVID, just like all of you, and thank you for letting me take the mask off for a few moments, we've had to pivot to virtual events. So instead of all the travel, my last trip was to Atlanta in February, just a few weeks before the virus broke out, everything's been virtual. And the key target market we've been trying to attract and use through virtual events is the Site Selectors Guild. That's their logo. And as of the last few months, they've been having these large multi-online events, multi-person, multi-participant events, and then they break down into little table talk venues where there's about five or six of us with one site selector, about 15 minutes. Everybody gets to introduce themselves, talk about their projects, and then we ask the site selector various questions, and really begin to try to drive some sort of relationship, because they're not driving around, they're not flying around, they can't come to conferences. But at least finally, we were able to get the Alliance and others to pivot towards some of those virtual events, and they've been going very, very well. All of our other events likewise have gone online, just as my peers and friends back at the Job Center have had to do. So we can't bring a lot of folks into our building. Instead, we've been doing online events. We did reshoring a few months ago to talk about manufacturing coming back to America from overseas and brought in a great keynote speaker. I think we had 50 or 60 people on that discussion. We've also participated in the Manufacturing Day, which unfortunately had to go viral. Usually we have 1,000 students at that. This time it was a couple of hundred, at least that day, on a virtual panel discussion. And then our business counselor, Justin Schultz, has just been banging it out of the park. He had a webinar this year that had over 100 people participate to try to find out more about how do we survive and thrive during COVID, how do we get PPP or the idle loan for our business? And he continues to have online events and do his counseling that way as well, so that we can help as many companies as possible. Terms of our financing department, here you can see the numbers for the last few years. Since 2016, 35 business projects in St. Charles County, over $65 million of new investment brought to the community, and you can see the number of jobs. And if you haven't heard, I'm sure you know, but we're also, because of federal allowance, able to do lending throughout the entire state of Missouri, as well as Metro East Illinois. So we'll serve anybody, the money comes back here, it's a great thing. But this year for 2020, we closed 20 business loans, total project value of over $36 million, and that was over 630 jobs. And to be honest, that way surpassed what the budget was set in December 2019, long before the economy hit the skids. So we exceeded what our budget was planning for this particular year. Here are six, these six companies, we helped this year grow and thrive in St. Charles County through our lending program. Petropolis in St. Charles, Alpha and Omega Coffee Bar in O'Fallon, Holtech Gas Systems in St. Charles, The Dairy Queen out in Wentzville, ENT and IT Company in St. Peters, and lastly, the O'Fallon Pain Associates, Pain Relief Associates. I may need to have to go there a little bit later myself. On the incubator side, folks, I am pleased to tell you, not one incubator company closed this year during COVID-19 at the EDC. All of them thrived, we helped each and every one of them, one-on-one assistance, and some of them are actually making more revenue this year than they did last year. For instance, our wine slushy company, they used to make wine slushies and sell them at Busch Stadium or Six Flags, or The Muti, or Fox, or all of these places that have all been shut down. Well, instead, he pivoted to making hand sanitizer, using his chemistry background, his PhD, his equipment and his contacts, and he is FDA-approved, because there's a new threshold of approval that's required to start doing that here, it's coming up soon, and he is making more money selling hand sanitizer than he ever did with wine slushies. So the entrepreneurs have learned how to pivot and thrive. And instead of anybody closing, we had five graduates, five new tenants, three expansions, and a partridge in a pear tree. Plans for 2021, we're still building out our team, our board. On our meeting just the other day, Jennifer and others on that board approved our 2021 budget. We are adding at least one additional person mid-year to help in more business attraction efforts. We're also working to rebrand our organization, we're working to come up with a whole new logo after this 30-year vintage one that we've used, more outreach, more virtual, but we're really expecting the events to pick up mid-year, depending on how things play out. For those who don't know, because I'm asked all the time, where does the money come from? Less than 10% of our budget is supplied by our contracts with our governmental partners, and we've worked hard to make that a reality for a long time. There was a time at the very beginning of the EDC where probably 20 or 30% of our budget was governmental funding, but it's now down less than 10% until you can see the majority of our funds come from our 504 program and our incubator, and then the rest of it is pulled together by the contracts that we have with our partners like the county, as well as the race when we're able to hold it, and other grants and activities that we have going on. The reason I put that up there, and I love this statue, and Steve, what's the name of the dog? I can't remember the name of the dog.
Seaman.
What is it?
Seaman.
Seaman, okay, very good. Lewis and Clark and the dog, Seaman. The interesting thing about business attraction and economic development is it doesn't pay the bills, at least not for us. It does for y'all when we put $65 million in the community. But unlike our loans where we get a fee, unlike our incubator where we get a lease rate, unlike our race where we get somebody registering, every time we land a deal, every time we bring a project to town, everything we work on doesn't pay us anything, because we're not brokers, we don't get a commission, we don't get a cut of the incentive, we don't get any of the sales tax, and so the only way it happens is by government leading the way in St. Charles County, which they have done since President Jefferson, and the Louisiana purchase. When this land was purchased and people were encouraged, and land grants were given, and the government helped bring about the growth that we all know and enjoy at this time. So I'm giving an invitation to the county, just as I have done to all of our partners, stay with us, stay engaged, stay at the regional table, help set the agenda. You're having an impact through the EDC, we are having an impact for all of you beyond St. Charles County, and we need to work together to continue to support job creation, business investment, and the tax base growth that all of us enjoy out here. And then lastly, I'll leave you with a couple of slides. I am just amazed, here you can see the single-family housing, January through November, for the last couple of years, this county is setting a four-year record in the middle of a pandemic for new single-family housing. And as always, this accounts for about 40% of all new housing construction in Metro St. Louis. So with the headwinds of 2020, this is what's happening. And here you can see the leading cities, O'Fallon, City of St. Charles, and Wentzville are the three leading in terms of where those single-family homes are being built, where people want to live in this town. Meanwhile, my friends at Workforce could say a lot more, and the new numbers don't come out for about another week, but we have an unemployment rate that makes the rest of the region and many other parts of the country envious. We have returned to full employment in St. Charles County. These are the numbers as of October. There's always about a month or so lag, so we're waiting for the November numbers to come out. So let me put it in perspective, there it is for the year. We started on our normal downward trend that first quarter, 3% below. You can see the virus and the lockdown and the other impacts that happened, and now we're back down to 3.1% for October, and I guarantee you for November, it's going to be 3% or 2.9%. And so that does not mean that the economic recovery is equal across all fronts. If you own a hotel, or you work at a hotel, if you own a restaurant, if you are in events like my son, who's got a degree in mass communications to do concerts, these kinds of things are not happening. And so we have a lot of people who are suffering. We've lost about 6,000 to 8,000 people from workforce participation in our county. Our labor force is down, because they've given up, or they're 1099s and they can't find work. And so we need to even this out as much as possible, but that comes through partnership, it comes through promotion, and it comes from all of us working very, very hard, as we've been doing at the EDC this year, to be productive for the community. And with that said, I want to say happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and thank you for the ongoing partnership with the county, and we hope that it lasts forever and ever.
Thank you, very impressive.
I'd be happy to try to answer any questions if I could.
Do you have any questions? John?
I just want to compliment Scott. He's always been an advocate for St. Charles County, and talking about somebody being in the right place at the right time, Scott is in the right place, and we appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you, John, I appreciate that.
We do.
Thank you so much.
I think that goes for all of us.
Thank you, Dave. Dave and I go way back to those days at St. Peters, right? Ronald Reagan was president back then, but, you know. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott. Next on our agenda is conditional use permits, bills for perfection, final passage. We have amended bill number 4902.
Amended bill number 4902, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 20-11A, for outdoor storage of boats and recreational vehicles, to Maple Leaf Holdings LLC, property owner, and Tim Kenke, applicant.
I believe there's, we don't actually open up for discussion, would you just vote on this? So please call the roll.
Amended bill number 4902, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 20-11A, for outdoor storage of boats and recreational vehicles.
The conditional use request is out north Georgia.
Sorry.
That explained it very well. That was planning and zoning, right? Appreciate Roger. Okay.
Councilman Cronin?
We're voting on the amended bill.
We already amended it last week.
Just a quick comment. Wentzville Almond reached out to me about this project, concerned about the EDC. I reached out to-
To Mike Holbert, and Mike Holbert said that our current property management ordinances would make sure that they kept them painted and looking nice. So with that being said, I vote yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4902 passes. The second conditional use permit is bill number 4903.
I also want to mention on this bill that Exhibit C has been timely received. Bill number 4903, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 20-11B, for self-storage or mini warehouses to Maple Leaf Holdings LLC, property owner, and Tim Kenke, applicant.
Okay, please call the roll.
Bill number 4903, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 20-11B, for self-storage or mini warehouses to Maple Leaf Holdings LLC, property owner, and Tim Kenke, applicant. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cronin?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4903 passes. Next on the agenda is public comments. I want to point out to the folks that have signed up to speak that we will accept three speakers on particular subject, for and against, and the presentations will be limited to three minutes. So, Claire?
And this is on the I-70 improvements through MoDOT, Paul McCain.
Hello. Do I need to introduce myself?
Sure.
Paul McCain. I've been a St. Charles resident now for six years, grew up in the area, really love it here, it's awesome. Coming from areas of St. Louis, where there's just not so much openness, inclusiveness, such a business-minded, you know, attitude in the area, it's been wonderful here. I'm a business owner as well, but again, more importantly, I'm a resident. I was surprised to learn about the MoDOT project that's, I guess, being moved forward with, mainly because I found out about it the week after the public hearing that MoDOT held, and that was concerning to me. It seems that the design-build process that's currently being utilized is perhaps being used to ignore feedback from the residents of the area, and that's the people who are going to use that stretch of highway most. One thing I really like about St. Charles is the large community that we have here. We're not segmented into tons of tiny little areas, because we're not divided by huge, you know, areas that we can't transit. And especially in this area of St. Charles, where there is a strong community, I think it's really important that we maintain good transportation, so that residents can move around and businesses can be supported. We don't want to include anything that might be detrimental to that, and so it's concerning to me that one-way roads might be part of the proposal. I'm not sure how much can be done at this time, before it just gets steamrolled through, perhaps with that, but I just don't feel that one-way roads would be any benefit whatsoever, and there's plenty of room to make the improvements where necessary, to make a real good, strong investment in the highway system, without eating into the roads that we need as a community to move back and forth along that highway effectively. We need to keep the businesses in business, it would totally kill those businesses. I would ask that you voice opposition to any plan that would include one-way roads along Highway 70. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Schifano?
Hello, Council. I'm Paul Schifano. I recently opened up a business in St. Charles, Petropolis, that was in the old Vaterat property. And I'll tell you, I came out to St. Charles, I began my career as a veterinarian at St. Charles Animal Hospital, and I was really excited to get back here, because it's an environment that I feel has really been supportive of the business community. And I'll tell you, the process through the EDC with Scott in their group, and through the city council, has just been wonderful. I felt supported all the way. But I opened my door, and suddenly this virus hit, and, you know, it's just been really tough. And as we see getting away from that, I've suddenly been surprised with this event that's about to happen with MoDOT. I was informed about it just days ago, and I listened to this Zoom meeting that the MoDOT folk put together, and it seemed pretty clear to me that the agenda really was to zip through this as quickly as possible and not get any participation with the citizens. I think there's reason that there are not a lot of residents here today, and I think that's because nobody knows about this. So I'm not quite sure what the solution is, but I really think that one of them is to get the community involved, and, you know, I don't know how we can do that, and how there's enough time to get that done, but I'm hoping that you might. My concern is one-way roads are going to be very destructive to my business. I'm concerned that the sound walls that may go up as well are going to be very harmful for highway exposure, but I'm also very concerned for the community. It's not just the businesses. I think that these extra drive times that are going to hurt my business are also going to hurt ambulances and police cars and other emergency vehicles that need to get to the properties. I've never heard anything from MoDOT about what effects, you know, emergency services are going to have with regard to this, and, you know, I think something as simple as that might be something kind of important to understand. So all in all, I think the businesses are going to be harmed by this, I think the homeowners are going to be disturbed by this, I think it's going to be an inconvenience for all of us. Lastly, I'd just say, you know, I've heard a lot about these Texas turnabouts or turnarounds, and how, you know, some states do a great job with regard to having one-way roads. The little bit of research I've done on it, you know, makes pretty clear to me that these are part of a master plan, these are things that from the very beginning are thought through and planned for, and when it comes time to turn from a two-way to a one-way road, on an outer road, that the overpasses and the necessary services are there. I think doing something that, this late in the game, with a community like ours, is going to be fraught with surprises, and I have a feeling a lot of the businesses along West Clay Boulevard are going to be the ones that pay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Grovener?
Good evening. I'm Dan Grovener. I own Five Star Auto Plaza on West Clay. Talked to some of you actually today. I share similar concerns about what's going on. I have a little, take it from a little different frame of reference. I've emailed just about every one of you on the council, so hopefully, I know some of you have read my email. But I had my business seven years ago over on Highway 94, and I lived through a project very similar to this. And construction, it's one of them things that nobody wants, nobody likes it, you know, but you see a light at the end of the tunnel, and you hope, once that construction and that project's done, you have something better than when you started. Well, that wasn't the case in Highway 94, at least my experience. What we found was the traffic count was reduced significantly from what we had prior to the beating of the construction, and people had a heck of a time trying to find us. But I opened my door, and suddenly this virus hit, and, you know, it's just been really tough. And as we see getting away from that, I've suddenly been surprised with this event that's about to happen with MoDOT. I was informed about it just days ago, and I listened to this Zoom meeting that the MoDOT folk put together, and it seemed pretty clear to me that the agenda really was to zip through this as quickly as possible and not get any participation with the citizens. I think there's reason that there are not a lot of residents here today, and I think that's because nobody knows about this. So I'm not quite sure what the solution is, but I really think that one of them is to get the community involved. And, you know, I don't know how we can do that and how there's enough time to get that done, but I'm hoping that you might. My concern is one-way roads are going to be very destructive to my business. I'm concerned that the sound walls that may go up as well are going to be very harmful for highway exposure. But I'm also very concerned for the community. It's not just the businesses. I think that these extra drive times that are going to hurt my business are also going to hurt ambulances and police cars and other emergency vehicles that need to get to the properties. I've never heard anything from MoDOT about what effects, you know, emergency services are going to have with regard to this. And, you know, I think something as simple as that might be something kind of important to understand. So all in all, I think the businesses are going to be harmed by this. I think the homeowners are going to be disturbed by this. I think it's going to be an inconvenience for all of us. Lastly, I'd just say, you know, I've heard a lot about these Texas turnabouts or turnarounds and how, you know, some states do a great job with regard to having one-way roads. The little bit of research I've done on it, you know, makes pretty clear to me that these are part of a master plan. These are things that from the very beginning are thought through and planned for. And when it comes time to turn from a two-way to a one-way road on an outer road, that the overpasses and the necessary services are there. I think doing something that, this late in the game with a community like ours is going to be fraught with surprises, and I have a feeling a lot of the businesses along West Clay Boulevard are going to be the ones that pay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dan Grovener.
Good evening. I'm Dan Grovener. I own Five Star Auto Plaza on West Clay. Talked to some of you actually today. I share similar concerns about what's going on. I have a little, take it from a little different frame of reference. I've emailed just about every one of you on the council, so hopefully, I know some of you have read my email. But I had my business seven years ago over on Highway 94, and I lived through a project very similar to this. And construction, it's one of them things that nobody wants, nobody likes it. You know, but you see a light at the end of the tunnel, and you hope, once that construction and that project's done, you have something better than when you started. Well, that wasn't the case in Highway 94, at least my experience. What we found was the traffic count was reduced significantly from what we had prior to the beating of the construction, and people had a heck of a time trying to find us. Especially people that weren't in the immediate area. They had a hard time navigating around just trying to get to where we are. So we pay a premium to be, to have the accessibility and the visibility on Highway 70. And when you take that away, what we have to do is we have to advertise more, and that means you have to hear more of my radio commercials. The problem is, is that when we do mass media, and part of the draw for that particular visibility that I have, it can be a very spur-of-the-moment thing as to why people pull in. And when you take a one-way service road, they don't have that ability to just go to that next exit and go. It has to be a complete event to get to us. I'll also echo the manner in which MoDOT has kind of used the time of year and the way, and the virtual meetings. I don't feel that the public is really being heard on what potentially is getting ready to happen. The other piece that I'd like to talk about is the fact that, you know, it almost feels like this is a Band-Aid. You know, Paul mentioned a moment ago that, you know, the highway system, I think, needs more than just these one-way service roads. And it almost seems like MoDOT is using the city service roads as additional thoroughfare to simply get through the city of St. Charles, maybe just go right through to St. Louis where it's real easier to navigate. You know, and actually Andy Turick, the St. Charles County engineer, in an email to Jerry Reese, councilman for the city of St. Charles, actually said, you know, "Though sixty-two million dollars is indeed a large amount of money, it probably is about half of what is needed to fix the issues out there." I talked to Mayor Borkmeyer today from the city of St. Charles, and that was one of his concerns that he had as well, is, is sixty-two million dollars really enough to fix the problem? Or are we just putting a Band-Aid on it? So I can comfortably say this in this room, it's kind of like, we can end this pandemic, right? We can shut everything down. We can lock all the doors, lock everybody in one place in thirty more seconds. But the net effect of what that does to the community as a whole and to the economy, is that really the right answer? So my suggestion is, could there be a third alternative that can get people through more conveniently, more efficiently, but not have the effect it does on the business? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have one more card on that.
Yeah, we'll allow one more.
Roger Bellman.
Thank you. I just found out about this today, so I don't have anything wrote down to go with. But I've been adamantly opposed to the one-way roads on the outer road for a long time, and I think that's consensus of all the business owners on the outer road. I think you'll find that. And it's disappointing that some of our leaders have known this feeling for a long time and still pursue, are still pursuing this. It's just so simple for us on the outer road that it's half of our traffic. You're taking away one direction completely. The other thing that people don't think about is, we do business with each other on both sides of the road. So we have to pay people who have to drive across the road to get parts from another dealership and whatnot. So now, it's another greater expense and more people we're putting on the road because they're having to drive twice as far. You can't just go over the overpass, you got to go all the way around. I don't know if I introduced myself, but I'm Roger Bellman from Bellman's Connection on the service road. And, you know, some of the things these guys have said that's a real concern too is the fact that nobody informs us about this. It's like, you know, I found out today. I came from two hours away for us to get here just so I could have my say, and there's a lot of other people I think that would be here if we were a little more informed. And I guess what I'm just asking is that you all represent us and really, really look at the concerns we have. You know, to me, it's kind of obvious when you have a group of constituents that are adamantly opposed to something, and people are making it a priority when there's other people in the county. I think of the Lake St. Louis exit, where the railway bridge is and whatnot, that backs up every night. Those people would love to have this a priority, but no, we're going to go with a group that's adamantly opposed instead of a group that desperately wants something. So I really appreciate you listening, and I really do hope to consider where we're coming from on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if the council will allow me, I would like to have Mr. Greif, you just come up to explain to us exactly where we're at in this project. Because I think there's a little bit of, obviously, there's a deadline coming up for comments, and I also just want him to explain what I tried to explain, maybe not very thoroughly, on the conference call today.
Well, I'm going to, I was walking over there to hand you my card, so we can definitely have a further conversation tomorrow or later on this week or after the holiday. So anyone who has questions within the group that has wants more details, I'll make sure you give me a call. The I-70 project, this section of I-70 has been studied for probably about the last thirty or forty years. The first study that I remember came out in the nineties. There is, in about every ten years, this comes up, and I think Mr. Bellman mentioned, he's kind of seen this process come out before. Each time that the I-70 is looked at, there always seems to be two options. There's two-way outer roads, one-way outer roads. Where we're at today is MoDOT is looking at a design-build project. They are seeking public comments, so are timed comments. So when you have these concerns, I'm encouraging, and I know most of you probably have already done this, go to the survey. There's a survey that MoDOT is accepting comments till January 4th. That survey, what I ask folks to do, and when they call, and I've talked to them, is give us, give MoDOT and their design teams specifics. I'm a business owner at forty-three twenty-three West Clay, and I'm concerned about if there's one-way outer roads or two-way outer roads, or I'm concerned about this accident because my customers come from point B or A, and they're trying to get to me at B. Give them that specific so that the design teams can come up with that solution versus we're just opposed to a solution. Where MoDOT's at currently is there's no plans out there. And I think that's also creating some hardship for some of the people because they want to see what is the final design. And that's part of the design-build process is that you establish what the problems are. And that's really where MoDOT's at right now, and that's why they're seeking the public engagement, is to make sure they have a full, complete understanding of the problems. What we do know is that this section of interstate is the oldest section of interstate in the nation. Interstate started in the city of St. Charles in the fifties. We know that there's been, during the last seventy years, no comprehensive rebuild of this section of I-70. So when they talk about putting Band-Aids on the solution, there's been an extra lane added here. There's been some improvements to the interchange, but no comprehensive plan to fix this section. And that's what this project takes, is that big-picture look of what is going to be the best improvements that can be implemented for sixty-two million? The key problems that we have is that we have aging infrastructure. We have, over the last ten years, over three thousand crashes on this section of interstate. We have interchanges where consistently traffic backs up onto the interstate from the ramps. So you have someone sitting, spilling out onto the freeway. That creates dangerous conditions. And we have businesses, maybe not the ones in the room, that are complaining that they're not wanting to reinvest in this corridor because it's, the interchanges are too congested. So you have properties like the Mr. State Building, or the Kmart site, or other sites along the corridor that have gone vacant, and they're not being backfilled. And part of that, when they leave, we ask folks, "Why aren't you relocating in this area?" Great visibility, poor access. So whether it's one-way or two-way, that fundamental problem of how do you improve access, business access, and that's in MoDOT's second priority that they put out there is, it's building a more efficient transportation system, but they added in the words of improving and maintaining local access. That's a big key. So that's something that the design-build teams are going to take. So there's a lot of folks that are jumping to the conclusion that it's going to be a one-way out road system. And the design build, we don't know. They're looking at the problems of poor access, good visibility. They're looking at the high crash rate, and they're looking at unsafe infrastructure. And how can they provide the best value? The process is, please get your comments in by January 4th, because they are being listened to. And that is the key to the folks in this room, anyone listening. We're pushing that information out on our social media channels, trying to get comments. There's been over four hundred comments received. They will be read. They are being paid attention to. This is the time for the public to be engaged. After January 4th, and as they go through the process, that's the time the design build teams will be competing and digesting all of that information. Yes?
I feel somewhat like some of these businesses do, that, you know, that maybe this is, I almost feel like hoodwinked. When we approved this ten million dollars, this sixty-two million dollar project, I read the documents again. I had to clarify them up. And it says the ten million dollars is supposed to go to improvements on I-70 and increased connectivity of the outer roads. It don't say nothing about one-way outer roads in there. And so MoDOT needs to get that real clear in their head. What Mr. Bellman said about connectivity, when connectivity means easier to get to a business or easier to cross the highway, it don't mean having to go all the way around. So I think, I've got a real problem with MoDOT and the priorities of this. I, you know, I think, you know, we committed ten million dollars to fix the highway and improve connectivity of the outer roads. We didn't prove anything, money to make the outer roads harder to get to these folks' businesses. So I feel the same way as some of these guys do. That wasn't explained to us fully, that they were even going to consider this concept when we approved the ten million bucks.
Well, I will correct that statement, is that you were presented an option of one-way and two-way. That's been studied, and at the time that this was done, it was when MoDOT did it through a thorough engagement process, through a planning and environmental linkage study that they completed two years ago, that decided, that laid out all of the priorities along I-70, all the way from downtown St. Louis all the way out to Wentzville. This section of I-70, being the oldest, was identified as a region priority because of the high number of crashes and safety issues. There were two issues, two potentials that were shown to the council. One way was one of those options.
But when you came to the council for the ten million dollars, and we read the, I read the agreement that we authorized Mr. Elman to sign, it said nothing about any outer roads other than improving connectivity of the outer roads and fixing Interstate 70. That was what was in the bill that we approved for the ten million bucks.
And that's still the objectives when you read the priorities that we got from MoDOT. Of the five priorities was to improve the safety and efficiency. Second was improve the connectivity of the outer road system. We have a system of outer roads on the Veterans More Parkway that's continuous from Fifth Street to Fairgrounds. On the north side, the West Clay side, there is not an outer road between Fairgrounds and Zumbell. Those outer roads don't connect to Hawksness, for example.
Connecting the outer roads together, great, fine. Making seventy improvements on an old section of seventy, fine. Screwing these people's businesses ain't fine, so that's-
I want to make sure it's very clear that no one is looking at how to harm businesses. That's in that number two objective, is improving the connectivity and making sure that it's easy to travel along this interstate and hopefully providing better access. When you look at this development of I-70, in the St. Charles section, if you look at the amount of new development that's occurred in St. Charles, the St. Charles corridor, which is our economic engine, in St. Charles County, about twenty-five percent of our revenues are generated from within one mile of I-70. So it is a critical corridor. It is our main street of growth in this county. You look at GM, you look at Amazon, you look, major employers are situated along I-70. So it is a very important route for us, something that has been studied and considered in many different ways. So there's no one in this room, no one at MoDOT, that wants to harm the businesses along I-70. They are very critical to this. But if you look at St. Charles section of I-70, from Fairgrounds to K Springs, for the last ten years, the growth rate in that corridor has been six-point-eight percent. Countywide, our growth rate is about thirty-three percent. If you go in the St. Peter's section of I-70, it's thirty-three percent. Though following within a mile, it's going at eighteen percent. There is something fundamentally wrong with this section of I-70. Part of it is the outer roads are not connected. Part of it is the outer roads, you can't travel from here, though following on our outer road system, you have to jump on the interstate because they dead-end at Darden Creek. They don't connect. They don't have, they have poor access on and off of the interstate. All of these issues need to be looked at and addressed because they are affecting the economic health of the city of St. Charles.
Connecting them's great. Turning them to one way is unfair economically. These people have invested their lives in their businesses. And I got ten emails from it today. One of them's from Sanford, who owns that big chunk of ground they're developing back in there.
All right, John.
Mr.?
Joe says ten million, but then we float them eight, two, and then eighteen million, and then ten plus eight. Then we float them an extra eight, two, that still should come back to us or something like that?
That is, that was looking at the interchange of I-70 and sixty-four.
I mean, so it's eighteen million dollars, I mean, the way I read it, isn't that, wasn't it ten and eight?
For the section of I-70 between Fairgrounds and K Springs, we have provided ten million dollars of the sixty-two million.
Where'd the eight, where's that eight? Where are we floating?
I don't know where the eight is coming from. Then we have another million dollars that we have provided for MoDOT to study the interchange of I-70, sixty-four, and sixty-one.
That's I-70, sixty-four, I think.
Okay, okay. So here's my question. When's the next public hearing on this? After, when there's a design of some kind, when's the next public input on this? Like, not the Zoom stuff doesn't work. When are we going to have a public hearing on this?
So the key is right now. This is the point for the public and the council and any businesses to complete the MoDOT survey for their voice to be heard.
Here's the problem with this process, and Steve, you were caught on to this last meeting. We're turning it over to design, to just everyone to make a decision on what's best for the traffic flow, regardless of what these people think. The designers of this are, we're going out to a design-build bid, right? So they're going to design it, they're going to build it and bid it. I mean, a design, bid, build, however you want to say it. So there will be no public input whatsoever. Because once we turn it over, we turn it over to MoDOT. Steve thought that we were going to be, as all of us up here thought, well, that this, okay, we're going to widen Highway 70, make a couple more lanes, maybe one, maybe two more lines. Lanes, they said at that meeting that they're not going to add any lanes because they're throwing all the traffic on the disservice road in one way and then that way, east and west. So I'm not, I remember Roger Bellman called me about four years ago or so, whatever it is. This thing kept coming up and up, and we're like, well, they're not going to do that. Because, so you said that they put all this input in years ago, and they had a front where they opposed this one-way traffic. And then we were brought before this at the last meeting, and I was kind of confused, honestly, because Roger called me and said, "Why are you guys doing this?" I'm like, "Well, we just approved the funding. We didn't approve the project." But now what I understand, Steve, is this is our last bite at the apple. We gave them the ten million dollars, and we have no say over this project because it goes to MoDOT. So basically, what I feel was dumped on us is a project we have no control over because it already got funded by, one, twenty percent of whatever got funded to MoDOT, and now we have no political gain or stay in this thing because we handed the project over. And so the folks that we represent, who's been paying for this stuff out of taxes, are going to get screwed. And that's how I feel about this thing.
I think we'll, I think we'll end discussion here, and if I can, let me try to sum up as best I can. At this point, January the fourth is a deadline, okay? So that anyone that has any kind of feelings whatsoever on the project, including the council here or anybody in the executive, obviously, any of you folks or anyone you can get a hold of, needs to get that survey filled out and be specific exactly why you are, you know, what you want. Okay, the second thing, as I understand it, is that at this point, you know, the engineers that are going to be presented with these companies that can compete can come up with a design that they feel best suits our needs. And that may be one-way outer roads, but it may be two-way outer roads. At this point, we really don't know, and I think that's one of the things that bothers us.
We don't get to vote on it, though, Terry.
I agree. That's exactly, you are right, okay? But I think in summary, I think that sums up about where we're at. Mr. County Executive can add something.
Can I ask you on a couple questions?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I think you summarized that pretty well. I mean, they're going to look at all of the factors involved, including the ones that these people have brought up. And I think a lot of them are assuming, I think maybe a lot of the people here, John, are just assuming that MoDOT has their mind made up on this or something. And I can understand that because- their mind made up on this or something. And, and I can understand that because MoDOT did decide to do one-way outer roads on I-64 in St., in West County. And then they decided to do them on 364 out here in St. Charles County, what, 15 years ago. And they most recently decided to go ahead and do one-way outer roads on 270 North. But you and I had a discussion with them today. And tell me if you disagree, but I, they assured us that they're going to go into this looking at all the options and decide what is the best for the, the transportation needs of that corridor. And I can understand why people maybe assume that they've somehow already have made their mind up on this, but I don't think they have. Your comments?
And that is, that's very correct. I mean, neither MoDOT has made their mind up nor has anyone within, you know, the council or the, or, you know, county government. I mean, it will be up to the design build teams to look at the money that they have available and the traffic and the economic issues and access issues associated with this section of I-70 and come up with what is the best project, what is the best solution. And MoDOT is, I, look, design build is, is one of those things that there's a lot of uncertainty. But also has yielded great results in St. Charles and the St. Louis region. We have 364 was a design build that St. Charles County went into. We provided 25 million of our local tax. We secured another 25 million in federal money for a 50-50 partnership with MoDOT, a hundred million dollar project, unheard of at the time. That project was highly successful. But when we went into that, the council had said in these chairs, their big concern was, are we going to provide $50 million and build a road to Route K? Or is it going to get to Bryan Road? No one really thought that we're going to get all the way to 64 because it just wasn't enough money. That project was estimated to cost, I think it was 165 million. So for a hundred million dollars, we got a project that exceeded our expectation. MoDOT did design build on the Boom Bridge replacement, another project that well exceeded the expectation based upon the same process of laying out to the design build teams the problems and giving them the data and giving them the opportunity to be creative. 270 was a recent design build project, again, exceeded the expectation. There was issues there, similar to these business owners, that had concerns about one-way and two-way. They came up with a solution that worked. There's areas that have one-way, there's areas that have two-way. I'm very encouraged that we here in St. Charles County will find, through this design process, a solution that's going to be beneficial. But the key is for the public to be heard. And the opportunity to do that is now. That complete the survey, make sure that your concerns that you express are specific so that that team is able to evaluate what the best solution is and how it can have the minimal impact on your business.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
I will park my car.
Okay, Claire, other speakers?
Dale Mansfield on COVID restrictions.
Mr. Mansfield?
Thank you. First off, I like these two guys standing up for these businesses. And we need to keep standing up for the businesses right now. This mask stuff has caused a lot of trouble with businesses here in St. Charles. When a person like me, who does not wear a mask, I'm a Christian patriot and I'm following the law of the land. We have a constitution, which you guys all took an oath to this, this afternoon. I heard you. First, Fourth, Ninth, Fourteenth Amendment. Every time I walk in a store and I'm told to put on a mask, I'm being violated. My constitutional right is being violated. My civil rights are being violated, specifically under the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Sections 201, 202, 203. They're all there for us. It protects us as individuals from the businesses and none of these businesses were ever informed that they are supposed to follow the law. That's why there's Title 18, Section 242 in the U.S. Code. We all have to follow the color of law. Everything is set there for us. Our forefathers did it right. We pledge allegiance to the flag here. One nation, under God. Yet, we're being cussed out, verbally abused, and it's not right. None of these businesses have been educated. And now, a lot of these restaurants and bars are losing more revenue because they have to close at 11 o'clock at night. They have the same constitutional rights, civil rights, and a lot more on their side to protect them. So that way, they're allowed to make the money. They're entrepreneurs. Scott Reddy left, but you know, that was part of the agenda is to boost up the entrepreneurs. Yet, it's not happening right now. I'm seeing on videos, reading testimonies from these business owners, these restaurant owners, of how they are losing money right now. And some of these restaurants, they may have 41 employees, but they're not able to keep them working. And we've got Christmas and we have New Year's coming up and they have to close at 11 o'clock at night? That's against the law to do that to them. There is no emergency. The math doesn't work out to where there's really an emergency anymore. It never was. You know, if we do the math, you look at the science, it's okay. But you know, we're one nation under God and God told us in the Bible 365 times, fear not. Yet, everybody walks around in fear. And who's pushing the fear? Got these big signs up, put your mask on or get out of my business. We've got a blacklist of businesses that we don't go to anymore. You violate my rights, why would I do business with you? I want to do business with people who respect our rights, respect our freedoms, and respect our health. And I wish you guys would take a look at all of the law and recognize that these mandates on the bars and restaurants is uncalled for. And they need to be educated on how they treat patrons walking in their doors. Because I'll tell you, I can walk into Sam's or Walmart anytime. They don't even say anything to me. I should not have to tell anyone. I am exempt. I'm a grown man. I know if I need to wear a mask and I know if I don't need to. I don't need to be told. And nobody else does either. And it's not fair to put that burden on businesses.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darrell Tulock.
Who is that?
Darrell Tulock.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I've never been in front of you guys before, so this is all new to me, so bear with me here. My name is Darrell Tulock. I represent, represent Diamond Music Hall. There is a law that's obviously passed in St. Charles County that says we are required to shut down at 11 o'clock.
Can you take your mask off so I can hear you? It makes it very hard to hear.
Yeah. I'm seeking permission for a variance on New Year's Eve for a private celebration at my, my establishment. Most of these people that are coming are all friends and family. It's an RSVP only. We're only allowing a few people to come in. We have a limited amount of people that are going to be allowed to our establishment. Like I said, this is an RSVP event that we're only letting people come in that have RSVP to us for the celebration and/or not have ordered, ordered tickets in advance, thus limiting the amount of people that can come to this celebration. Everybody attending this event will be getting health scans at the door and required to wear masks. Tables will be seated eight to 10 feet apart. We have 20,000 square feet in our establishment, which we could actually accommodate 500 tables at 10 feet apart. I'm only asking for 130. Like I said, most of these people will be all private friends and family. This is not just a local gathering where anybody can come in through the evening through the door. If they have not prepaid, they will not get in. I'd like to state that we're, we're not a bar. We are a music hall. And we're proceeding. This is a private party. Stay open until midnight or past midnight. We're just being financially strained through this whole pandemic this year. It's very bad. We, we, we hope and pray that you guys grant me a variance for one evening of the year for a special event for our friends and families and establishment because we have no other place to hold it.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't get the name of your establishment.
Diamond Music Hall.
What?
Diamond Music Hall. We've advised by the rules, everybody wears masks. We all have. We screen everybody at the front door. Through this whole pandemic, we've accommodated a six-foot radius to our patrons' decision. We do have some tables that are closer. We do recommend that they take the six-foot apart tables, but we have two separate sections they can handle. And like I said, we can, we can hold up the, I'm sorry?
I just didn't get the name.
Oh, it's okay. We can handle up to 1,500 people in our establishment. And I'm only trying to get 100, about 100 couples into our facility. St. Peters, we're the old electric cowboy next to Kokomo Joe's.
You would be in Nancy's district, huh?
No, that'd be, that'd be, that would be in mine. That'd be, be in mine, yeah.
I've owned, okay, I've owned another business for 30 years in St. Charles. I was born and raised here. This pandemic has pretty much killed this business. And we thought we could do this through a private manner, being a private party. We were informed that, you know, we don't want to do that. We don't want to take the fine. Everybody said, let's just take the fine. I don't want to take the fine. I'd rather do this the proper way without arguing or getting, you know, get my new business in trouble. Like I said, I've been in business 30 years. I've lived here 30 years. I own two other businesses that we, we run. This pandemic is hitting all of us. And if we're not allowed to have this one little event, this will pay our bills for almost a year. That's why we're trying to have this event because we have donors and things coming to our event to help us stay open. We're the only establishment on this side of the river that can conform fully to a band with a stage, thrown green room, privacy. And we're trying to become a mark in St. Charles as a new music club. And like I said, I'd highly appreciate if you guys would grant us this one-day variance for our club to be able to stay open for the next year. This is repercussions on this. It would take us a year to recoup from this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there any other speakers?
No more speaker cards.
Okay, next up is the oral report from our county executive.
I'll keep it short, Mr. Chairman. I think that all of you receive the, the numbers on a daily basis. And I'm pretty much, pretty much making the same report I did at the last meeting, which is, you know, the, the good news is things aren't getting any worse. The bad news is they're not getting that much better. Although I will say, just in the last few days, we've, we've seen what may be the beginning of a, of a good trend. We're, we're, we're down 14% over the last 14 days. Hospitalizations are down to 161. That's 36 less than Friday morning. But again, that, that can vary. And as I've said before, the hospitals are really what we're, we're really concerned about at this point. Going back to what Scott said, I mean, it's amazing. It's amazing the way that the economy has kept going even during the pandemic. And I've been talking about this when I talk to people, you know, for the last nine months. The economy is continuing to function. I think we have done everything we can to help those businesses continue to do business. We're the only jurisdiction that didn't order anybody to close, even back in March. We have done everything we can to allow people to continue to do business. And I want to thank all those bars and restaurants. We've sent them three different letters on three different times, just alerting them to the fact that, hey, we're, we're, we're looking at a potential problem here. And I will tell you that most of the people, most of those businesses have responded very, very well in very, very responsible manner. And because of that, we have not had to do some of the things that other jurisdictions in the region have done. That's one of the reasons, I think, why we have a 3%, unemployment. St. Louis County has more restrictions. They have a 4.5%. The city of St. Louis is at 6%. The other thing that I think we've been able to accomplish is to keep our kids in school much better than anyone else. I've called around, talked to a lot of educators, tried to get some exact figures. It's, it's very tough. But I think we've had over 80% of our kids in school. 80% of our people have chosen to send their kids to school rather than do the virtual learning. That percentage is less than 60% in St. Charles County, or St. Louis County. And I think from what I'm hearing, less than 50% in the city of St. Louis. So again, I'm, 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 it's a difficult situation to balance these things. But, and knock on wood, I think, I think we've, we've, we've done the things that we have to do and we haven't done more than we need to do. And that's one of the reasons why some of these economic indicators are still good. It's one of the reasons, I think, that the schools are still trying to educate those kids in the way that we know is best for those kids. As far as the 11 o'clock, that is entirely a defensive position that we took. And it was based on the fact that we were the only place in the region that was open after 11 o'clock. And, and I went down, went to several of these places. You've seen tapes of the kind of, you know, behavior that we had in some of these places. And I would love for things to get better and for us to relax that 11 o'clock rule. I called Lyta Cruz in a couple of weeks ago. I said, hey, things are really looking good in the city of, of St. Louis. Your number's down. Are you going to relax your opening time? And I said, I'm not trying to talk you into it. I said, but if you do, please let me know because we would want to do the same thing. We just don't want to be the only people open. So that people from Illinois, the million people in St. Louis County, the 300,000 people in the city of St. Louis, the only place they'll be able to go to socialize and drink would be St. Charles County. And that's why we went ahead and instituted that 11 o'clock. I'd be glad for things to get better and we could make it 12 o'clock or 1 o'clock or, or whatever. And I hope that'll happen. There's some indication we may be moving in that direction. But until we do, I just don't think we can be a magnet for everybody else in the region to come out here. And these businesses, you know, will be able to open and stay open till 11 o'clock. And if they want to start, you know, the celebration two hours earlier, that's certainly entirely within their rights. But that's where we are on that. I hope I can report the next time we get together that we've been able to relax those, those requirements. But right now, I don't think we can. Thank you.
Question for Steve.
Question.
Steve, you and I spoke about this 11 o'clock thing over and over again. And I disagree with this 11 o'clock premise when it was presented as COVID. But I appreciate you saying what you just said because I explained to quite a few people that it's really not, I mean, you can say it's COVID, but it's mostly about the overload that we get in mostly St. Charles with kids and young people drinking and fighting and gunshots and stuff that it's just unbelievably out of control. So for that perspective, it puts an overload on the police and they really can't handle it. I'm talking about thousands of people showing up on the streets and everything else. So it does become a real problem. The only question I would have is, is like any outlaying areas, you know, the wineries or the, I don't know how you can differentiate because there's no real zones. But it's like some places is completely not needed. So I don't know, like this gentleman, I'd ask you about some, we're inquiring about CARES Act, about who gets money and who doesn't get money. And your comment was, we haven't closed down any businesses, so we're really not responsible for, for helping those businesses that weren't closed down. And I agree with that. I totally agree with that. But in this case, if you've got music halls and concert halls that make a lump sum payoff on concerts and we're closing this, this New Year's party, then isn't that, if it's a government interference, then maybe he should get CARES Act money. I mean, or we figure out a way to get guys like that open if it's, if it's a possibility that they know everybody and they know the risk, they're adults, they can make their own risk on the COVID stuff to begin with. So I understand your dilemma. I told you I have. I just don't know if I agree with that.
Well, Joe, you were, you were at the meeting that we had with, you know, the situation. And, and here's where we're back to the same issue here. You know, we can go ahead and instead of closing, we can require six-foot separation and mask and all those kinds of things. But how do you enforce that? And we're not sending the police, that's for sure. So our health people, I mean, are we going to go out there with a counter and see how many people they let? I mean, they've had all sorts of other ways to address this in other regions and other parts of the region, okay? But comes, it comes right down to it. It's, you're basically putting all the, the owners on an honor system. And the only thing that we really can enforce is a closing time. And the only thing that we really can enforce is a closing time. Because we can, you know, we, we can, we can know if people are avoiding that. And again, I, you know, I'm just very pleased that I think, you know, most of our people have been very cooperative. I think they understand that, that this is not a whole lot to ask of them compared to what other jurisdictions are requiring. And again, we will just have to disagree on this, but I, I feel, I feel, I feel this is what we need to do.
Mr. Cronin, one, one last thing.
I think the whole problem stemmed from St. Charles, okay, and all the little crowded bars there. I mean, let's agree, that's what we saw pictures of, everything. This guy's got a 20,000 square foot building out, St. Peter's area, whatever. And I mean, that's, that's a huge building. That's six, eight times bigger than this room. There's probably less chance of getting COVID at his private party than there is in this room right now. So what my, what my thing would be is, we have to be able to distinguish between the two. Example, a lot of the VFWs and the, and the Knights of Columbuses, they're going to, it's traditional that they have parties on New Year's Eve too, Steve. So I mean, like, you know, we got to shut down to all the KC halls and the wineries and, and the, and the Knights of Columbus and VFWs and all that, that they got to shut down 11 o'clock on New Year's Eve too? I mean, and I think he's doing the right thing. He's trying to bring this attention and getting a variance for this, where all those other guys are going to say, oh, the hell with, there ain't no cops. Keep on drinking, folks, you know what I mean? So that's, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm getting at. There has to be a distinguished, there's not a problem in rural districts like minor Brazos with this. The problem is in downtown St. Charles. I think it's unfair to, to make that guy be penalized for those folks in downtown St. Charles. That's my point.
All right. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove the parks, youth activity parks.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Can you put the skate ring too, Joe?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor of removing that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next up is the actual consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the issue that Mr. Cronin took off?
Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, we come back to the item that has been removed. Mr. Cronin?
I pulled up, on April 27th, we approved the original design plan for, for the youth activity park. And back then, it was called for, supposed to be the, it was a, it was a request for proposals or qualifications. They picked this Patty Bank and Associates. It was for rebranding, redesigning unit, youth activity, youth activity park for $652,000. Now we're coming up, there's another $219,000 to Patty Banks Associates. And it looks like she can't handle the rest of this project, so she's actually getting a subcontractor to do the, to the work on it. So, you know, my thing is, we paid, I didn't vote for it back in April, but we paid, county paid $652,000 once for, for this rebranding redesign. And now we're paying another $200,000 for, I don't know what, okay? But I won't go for it. You guys can vote for it if you want to. That's just my, my piece on it.
I got a question.
Yes.
Is Ryan in here?
Ryan's not here tonight.
John? So John, this extra work order, we've already spent, what, 600 and something thousand on designing a park, a skate park. This was for the improvements of the skate park, is that correct? It says 872,000, which is, adds a 219 in it. So we're going to add another 219,000 for someone to tell us how to do a concession stand and pro shop. Is that the way I'm reading this?
So this is Ryan, at the last meeting presented, kind of the concept plan for the youth activity park. So this additional 219 is for that new building. So the previous funds that we allocated was for the master plan, which included this flash play. It all includes a play area, the parkour, and the BMX training area. What's not included in the original was a new building.
This is for the design, or for modeling the concession stand? Is that what you're saying?
This is for, yeah, I can.
The design, 219,000 for the small little concession stand?
Well, it's not for a concession stand. It's for a new, I think it's like a 6,000 square foot building to be constructed. So this is the architectural fee for that. That's why Councilman Cronin mentioned that the Patty Banks and Associates has a sub doing the architectural design and the structural work needed for the construction of a new building.
So typical design, for an architect designing a house, is a dollar fifty to $2 a square foot. Okay, that's $12,000. That's why I don't understand why there's 219,000, Joe.
I think there, and, and Ryan can definitely answer this if you want to table this at the next meeting. My understanding, the estimate of that, the new building is around $2.5 million. So the fee was somewhere in that 8% to 10%, which is traditional for architectures.
$200 for 6,000 square foot building?
A six or seven thousand square foot building, whatever it was.
And I won't support it either. So we can table it or just not support it, whatever you want.
I'd like to ask for a motion to table this, since Ryan's not here and I sure he is.
Motion made.
Second.
Okay, most, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, we will put that on the table and put it up for next month and have Ryan take a look at it. Okay, next up is bills for final passage, starting with bill number 4900.
Bill number 4900, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a project contract between St. Charles County and the St. Charles County Community College for one-stop operation and career services provided through the Missouri Job Center of St. Charles County.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 4900, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a project contract between St. Charles County and the St. Charles Community College for a one-stop operation and career services provided through the Missouri Job Center of St. Charles County. Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4900 passes. Next up for final passage, bill number 4901.
Bill number 4901, an ordinance amending sections 132.040, 405.060, 405.525, 410.110, 410.145, 410.160, 410.210, 410.220, 410.410, 410.460, 412.080, and 420.020 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, addressing additional regulatory requirements and design criteria for post-construction stormwater management.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend bill number 4901, replace with substitute bill 4901.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion or amendment to this particular substitute?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Don't we, don't we vote on the substitute first and then talk about it?
We'll do discussion on the, on the substitute bill first.
We discuss it first and then it's final.
Okay, so Mr. Cronin, you want to?
The only change to the substitute bill is the fact that, that our DTA kind of enumerated the process for appeal, for variance, for if someone has a problem complying with this particular ordinance, okay? We asked for three things, I believe, as a council, part of the council did. One would be to exclude three to five acre tracts. It doesn't truly exclude them because of the fact that those three and five acre tracts still have to go through the approval process of community development under similar to existing ordinances we have now. The second thing was that we have a, per party would have a right to appeal to the planning and zoning in the council, okay? Third thing was that, which we already have in the charter, that we can change this thing down the road if there's a problem. So that basically, the, one of those three conditions is, is what the amendment's about.
All right, first of all, I guess we need to vote on the substitute bill or?
The substitution.
Okay. All those in favor of the substitution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now we are actually dealing with substitute bill number 4901. Mr. Hammond has comments.
You know, back when we started a conversation on this regulation, I was under the impression that, from staff, that we had received a mandate from DNR or, or EPA, whichever. And, and so I asked to see a letter regarding that. And I never have received a letter, a copy of that letter from DNR or, or EPA, either one of them. So I, I'm not prepared to vote on this. If I do tonight, I'll vote no. But I'd like to see it tabled until I get a copy of that letter. And I think, I think we really should have disputed this mand, this mandate, if, if that's really what happened, that unincorporated St. Charles County really does not meet the As do the cities who have already adopted this, where they have a lot of commercial development. Any commercial development we've ever had typically gets annexed into the cities anyway. But until I, until I see this letter, until we've had a chance to dispute that with, with whatever regulatory agency has sent us this notice, I don't even know that there has been a notice sent. So I'm not prepared to vote on this. I'd prefer to table it, since I know a lot of work has gone into this. Until I see such a letter and had a chance to dispute whether or not St. Charles County should have to comply.
Mr. Herbert, I believe, can you come forward? I believe, I believe he actually has a copy of the letter, I believe, from DNR. Is that correct?
I do, yeah. Let me pass that out.
Okay, Mr. Herbert, can you sum up what exactly the DNR is telling us in this document?
Yes, so there's, this is 27 pages of a letter warning that we received from DNR in 2018, following their audit of, of the county, of the MS4 program. And so they found that the county was deficient in a number of areas. So this outlines all of them. What I would prefer, rather than go through every single one, you'll see, you can read through them if you want. On page 11 of 15, there is a section that deals with the specifics of the actions to be taken. It's under compliance determination, violations, and required actions. And it is the mandate that you're speaking to, that the county is to upgrade our, their standards to meet the new requirements. And that, that's really the, the meat of the, of the letter. What we did, following receipt of this letter, is we sent a letter to DNR asking for clarification on a number of the noted violations, to make sure we understood clearly what, what the issues were. They actually responded with clarifications and actually negated some of the supposed concerns. So we did push back technically on, on that to make sure that we weren't just answering unnecessarily. Beyond that, we then provided a timeline and a schedule for our proposed action, to amend the ordinance and, and the scheduled timeframe to meet that, to do that. And their, the response to that was, they agreed with the timeline. They appreciated our efforts to work towards a solution and agreed that, believe that what we're doing is in the benefit of Missouri, St. Charles City, St. Charles County residents. So that, that's kind of the, the approach we took. And that's their, we've been keeping them apprised of the process throughout this. So as we are nearing completion here, they are aware of that. They're kind of watching to, to make sure that we try to stay on schedule to get this approved this year.
Mr. Cronin?
Mike, this was 2018. And you know, since then, I know the governor's relaxed a lot of restrictions. I mean, I just recently, it was in the paper, he's allowing hog manure storage pits in northern Missouri for multi-million gallon manure storage pits, two foot above the groundwater now, okay? He's catching a lot of heat for that in northern Missouri. So my question is, a lot of this stuff that they were writing up for in 18, how much of that is applicable now? And could some of this problem just be solved by a simple call from the county executive or the governor, okay?
Well, as I stated, some of the concerns have been negated through our, through, just through our letters that we asked for clarification on. So not everything that was in there is, had to be addressed.
Salt dome without a door.
Yeah.
That's pretty ridiculous.
And that's kind of important to note, that, you know, they're looking at county facilities. It's not only the developers or, or people that are doing projects in the county. It's the county itself. We're a big part of that. So they're reviewing our projects to, to see where, what we're doing and making sure we're doing the, the right way. But, you know, your, your example of hog farms, rural counties in the middle of Missouri, you know, they're not MS4s. They're, they don't have to be, follow those same, the same rules. We are an MS4 because of our population. And so the cities and part of the urban county, there's 65, 70,000 residents in unincorporated St. Charles County that are inside of the urban core, the golden triangle, if you will. So we've got a lot of areas within that unincorporated area that have a lot of development and have to impact upon their neighbors and neighboring watering bodies.
My district borders Warren County and Lincoln County. And they're rural areas too, and they don't have to abide by, but our builders will. That's my, my biggest heart burden with this is the added cost, not only to the, the developers and builders of the subdivisions, but also the homeowners associations, because they're going to have to maintain what I've been called is snake pits, okay? That's what one builder calls them. So I still got a heart burden with this issue.
I think it's, it's a good thing to point out. I mean, we're talking about quality of life that's different in St. Charles County than in Lincoln or Warren County. There, there's a noticeable difference in that. There's higher standards in St. Charles County and there's, that's, that's what people are expect, expectations are when they move here.
Okay.
Mr. Cronin?
Mike, just what you said, I agree with you. The standards are higher. However, we don't want to overburden the residents with rules and regulations and over cost makes it, we, we also, the, the home builder said it'd be a $5,000 per home fee, approximate fee, to have to do this stuff. Then it has to be maintained by a subdivision. And you know it will get maintained. Who's, you know, you know how that goes. I mean, this stuff doesn't get maintained. It just turns into a big swamp hole or, or whatever. But I, I'm not so much in favor of this, because with what you said, it's true. Their standards are higher, but we don't have a problem with this right now. And we've asked, we had asked for, because this is unincorporated, the cities already do it, and, and we had asked for three acres and five acres to be excluded. And you guys wrote into this ordinance about all these different, well, they, it can be excluded if this, or this, or that, or this, all these stipulations. By the end of the day, it's going to be made up, made the decision will be made by somebody down in the community development where it's truly not excluded. They could say, well, it doesn't hit this point, or it doesn't hit that point. And that's not what we, when, when the committee talked to you guys about that, that's not what we asked for.
So nothing was written in. That's the existing language. It's already in place.
But we weren't enforcing it. We weren't doing this, is what I'm saying. We weren't doing this underground.
It's a great point. It's a great point. We hardly ever have utilized that, that language. There's three acre development that has, if, if there's impacts to watering bodies downstream that are impaired, like Lake St. Louis was an impaired water body. If development happened in the unincorporated area that flows directly into Lake St. Louis, Prairie Peak, whatever that part is, that we have the ability to add some additional measures to try to safeguard against making that impaired water body worse. We're trying to prevent that from happening. So in the, Rich has been with the county 30 plus, 35 years. I asked him, how many times have we utilized that? Five, six times in the history of, in the county. So it's not something that's utilized very often. So, and that's something that's been in place. So that's not new wording. That's not new, new language. That's existing language. We're not adding to, to the regulations on that side of things. It's simply keeping that in place per, and frankly, if we take that away, that's backsliding. DNR would look at that as taking regulations away that we already have in place, when we're supposed to be bolstering what we are, we already have. So it's actually the, the opposite. We'd be taking one step forward and one step back.
All right. All right. You know, my only comment, at Planning and Zoning Meeting on Wednesday night, there was a proposal for the property off Dingledine Road, and the developer pointed out that they knew these regulations were coming, that they were going to be in compliance with these new regulations, even though they hadn't been passed yet, but they could see that they were coming down the road. And one of the comments they made was that they're pretty much the exact same regulations that exist in the cities. Is that correct?
With exceptions.
These might be a little bit less.
Right. We've actually tried to build in flexibility to allow the developers to work with the constraints they have, to not be pigeonholed into just having to build a detention basin, for instance. There's different ways they can do it. And that's something that we look at on larger lot subdivisions, is they don't have to build detention, they could just double the size of the buffer along the creeks and things like that. Instead of a 25-foot buffer, they could do a 50. That's a measure that would help with water quality. That's not something that would eat into profitability or the expenses of that development.
Any other comments? Ms. Ehlum.
I just think the point of this is, we have a letter warning from Missouri Department of Natural Resources. It tells us we're on their radar. We have flexibility built into this program, and just because we find out something that's in the regulation, that's been there for 35-plus years, doesn't mean it's new, it just means it's new to us. So I think what we've got, especially with the new wording that Mr. Cronin's added to this, is something that gets us down the road, gets us off the radar of a state body that we don't want to be on their radar. So I think overall, this is a win-win in trying to do as little overburdening of our people as we possibly can, but get away with what we're going to, not get away, get out of the radar from this statewide body that is definitely going to be looking at our things if we get off of this timeline that we've laid out. So it seems to me this is a good compromise, and I'm in favor of passing it the way it says.
I agree.
All right. One last thing, Mr. Cronin.
I wish I'd have got this letter back then, so I, you know, instead of waiting till the last minute.
Honestly, I thought I did. I went through my email, and I thought I'd sent this out. So I apologize on that.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Substitute bill number 4901. An ordinance amending sections 132.040, 405.060, 405.525, 410.110, 410.145, 410.160, 410.210, 410.220, 410.410, 410.460, and 412.080, and 420.020. Of the ordinances of St. Charles County addressing additional regulatory requirements and design criteria for post-construction stormwater management. Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
No.
Councilman Brazel.
No.
Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4901 passes. Next up for final passage is bill number 4904.
Bill number 4904, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to C2 general commercial district as per application RZ 20-12.
Yes, Mr. Cronin.
I talked to this church staff, had told them that this thing wouldn't get approved, and they sold the property to somebody else. So this thing's inappropriate.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and vote on the rezoning anyway, though.
Bill number 4904, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to C2 general commercial district as per application RZ 2012. Councilman Hammond.
Yes. I mean, no.
Councilwoman Schneider.
No.
Councilman White.
No.
Councilman Cronin.
No.
Councilman Brazel. Councilman Ehlum.
No.
Councilman Hollander.
No.
Okay, bill number 4904 does not pass. We move on to bill number 4905 for final passage.
Bill number 4905, an ordinance adopting and appropriating the fiscal year 2021 budget for St. Charles County, Missouri, and amending ordinance number 20-089 to increase only the county's contribution to group medical insurance.
Questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Cronin.
I'd like to make a motion to amend this bill beginning on page nine, and add a new count under the general fund revenue transfer from parks.
Wait a minute, we're not quite there yet, are we?
We're 4905, are we not?
This is medicine insurance.
Yeah, we're on bill number 4905.
It's all together. Isn't it two together? This is the budget and medical insurance, is it not? Yes.
You also got a bill 4911 for the budget.
Appropriating.
So where do you want to put it at? 4911 or 4905?
Right here.
Okay, I'm sorry, I made the mistake, Mr. Cronin.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend the bill beginning on page nine, add a new account under the general fund revenue transfer from parks to police leadership with a new account number of 01, 001-3999 on page nine, an amount of $350,000. Add a new account under general fund expenses, police leadership adjustment, a new account number of 0018100-4199 on page 26, an amount of $350,000.
Page 126.
Sorry?
Page 126.
126, okay. And a new account under parks relation expenses, transferred to general fund, police leadership, a new account number of 2453300-49999 on page 231, for $350,000. Basically, this bill, while it talks about insurance, it's really what we're doing is we're approving the budget here. And when I went through the budget, we've had this discussion before about police pay. Can the people in the back room pull up the spreadsheet that I prepared with help?
There it is.
Essentially, we took the report that we got at the last meeting, and Donna and Claire and I took the average of the areas, the police officers' area, for captains, lieutenants, and sergeants. Mr. Brazel before had done some work on captain's pay, but I wanted to look at lieutenants and sergeants away as well, because we know the rank-and-file officers are at 104% to 106% of their pay grade, according to what we received from Samantha. But this comprehensive analysis was passed out at the last meeting, it was only on pay grades, it wasn't the actual pay. This is actually the pay that was pulled off the Post-Dispatch's site for 2019, okay? And since there was no raises for 2020, it's a pretty accurate comparison. I checked it against Samantha's numbers and Joanne's numbers, and they're pretty close. The only thing with the averages, Samantha throws in Crestwood, which Crestwood's kind of a ringer, and it drops everything down. If you look at the bottom of the columns in the red, okay, our captains are being paid about $27,000 less than the local average, okay? Our lieutenants are paying paid about $45,000 below the local average, and the sergeants, collectively, about $202,000. Individually, the line right above will tell you it's $6,900 for captains, $6,500 for lieutenants, and $11,893.21. If you add it all up together, it's $275,000. I talked to Bob Schnur, and Bob said benefits would pump that number to about $350,000. I asked Bob where we could get the money for that, and basically, I looked at originally about, if you, this on the spreadsheet, come from cost allocation of parks to the general fund for security at the county parks. We are already receiving money to the general fund from the Parks Department, because our police officers provide security for the county parks. County parks are expanding, we've got more and more work for the police officers to do. So I don't think it's too big a stretch to ask parks for another $350,000 to, for security purposes at the county parks. That will fund this, and there's a good chance these numbers could be significantly lower, because Samantha pulled up some numbers. For instance, lieutenants already have a, they already promised in the budget, a pay increase. So you might see a number less than $350,000. But Bob being conservative, and I am as well, $350,000 is probably a good number, because we know it may come in less than that. My thinking was, if we could afford $23 million for parks improvements next year, and we can afford, what, $2 million for a 6,000-square-foot building, and $850,000 to redesign youth activity, redesign a youth activity park, we can afford to spend $275,000 to make sure these guys that are risking their lives every day for us get paid a fair wage. And that's the bottom line of it. Look at it this way, that $375 is less money that we spent for the design of Riverside Park, which we took a gravel parking lot and made it into a parking lot for RVs and boats. So to me, that's why I got this amendment out there. I'd like to see those guys in blue get paid a fair amount, and they're not getting paid a fair amount right now. So that's the purpose of the amendment. I'd like to thank Donna and Claire for helping me with these numbers, and these numbers are pretty damn accurate, okay?
Yes. I just want to go over this, I'll be real brief. Can you put that up on the overhead real quick, this letter? This letter's from Samantha. I sent her a list of questions, and I sent it to you guys, but I want to show you just kind of what I'm talking about. I echo everything Mr. Cronin said. Oh, that's hard to read, geez. Well, I can't read it. Can you guys see that? Okay, so what I ask for is, please, talk on it.
That's good.
Okay, what I was wanting to do is, Samantha was good enough to put a bunch of questions you got in for me, and I just wanted to completely understand it. So please show the math. If the captain's actual pay averages 94,375, which is page five, and that's based on their actual pay, why does it average pay, say, 99,572, according to their pay scale? So on the PowerPoint, the PowerPoint is the average of the pay range. So the numbers they're giving us, saying that they're at 90% or 80% or whatever that number is, they're using the pay range, okay? So if you go down, and then I ask the second question, this is, can you explain, referring to page five, assistant directors, what is their range? What is their pay today? Where do they fall in the percentage of the range? So what they did is, is they used, they took the pay range and then took their actual salary. So you add up, you add up the 103 and a 161, you add them together, divide by two, and it's 132,000, which is 50%. So move that back down to my math on there, Donna. No, no, go down. Yeah, so if you take the pay range, my writing's horrible, sorry about this. If you go to the captains, you're at 87,248, to the pay range, to 106. So the average of that is 96, but their actual pay is 94,000. They're using 90, the average is 96 at 50%, but they're about at 40% at 94. Their actual average is 94. So the numbers that were given to us were inaccurate. They said 90%. So if we're using the consistent math, the equations, why don't we run everything off their actual pay and not just a sliding scale of the range? Did I misunderstand that, Samantha, or is that the actual math that you showed to me in that letter? That's what it says. So the point is, is I just, I mean, I don't want to put you in a bad spot, but it says in your letter that you went from the pay range with the captains, see the underlying things, and then down below, you use their actual salary on the graph. And so what I was trying to do is use their actual salaries to show what they're making. But you guys used the pay range for the captains and not their actual pay. So if you went to their actual pay, their average is at 94,000, not 99 or 98 that you used. And so the math was not consistent with the way you figured both types of salaries.
So the ranges for both is the actual ranges given to us. And any time do we actually use real salaries for municipalities or for our captains? It's always been ranges.
You're not understanding what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, if you, Donna, slide it back up to the graph, to the assistant directors. See the 132, that's, according to yours, it says actual salary of incoming. You're saying that that's what they're making, 132. And the range is 103 to 161, that's the range. So you add those two together, and the 132 is 50%. So that's accurate. That is 50%.
That is 50%.
You're right, okay? So you go back down to go to the captains, their actual range is 87 to 106, that's their range. The number that you guys used was 98,000 of the midpoint, but none of them make 98,000. Their actual average is 94,000, so that makes it 40%. So when you use that equation, you did two different types of math. You used the pay range for the captains and not their actual pay, and for the assistant directors, you usually use their actual pay.
No, 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 no. That's a totally different question. That's what they're actually making. I did not put them there to make it 50%. I didn't add those two numbers together.
You didn't put the 50% on there?
That's what they are. They currently are 50% of that range. We didn't add the two numbers together and put them there. They were actually, their current pay is 50% of that range. So our range for the 306, they're at 50% of it. They're smack dab in the middle.
So where are the captains at?
The captains are, I'm not.
Look at this sheet she's got.
If you do the math.
This was a sheet that I think Joanne handed out, okay? And I took at the bottom and averaged it all, okay? You scrolled up to the bottom, okay? The average captain pay for 2020 was 94,375. This is based on county numbers. Lieutenant was 85,845, and sergeants were 73,209. That's just by simple math doing that. If you figure the 4% raise that they've got coming next year, on the far right bottom, you'll see the average numbers for 2021. And the average numbers for 2021 is what we, I plugged into the spreadsheet that Donna and Claire worked on. The difference between our spreadsheet, her stuff measures pay ranges.
Correct.
Our spreadsheet measures the actual pay reported to Post-Dispatch. I also cross-checked the Post-Dispatch numbers to these numbers, and they're within 100 bucks. In fact, they're real close. So long and short of it, however you slice it, dice it, or whatever, we're paying these guys to protect us less money than their neighbors are, and it's not a little bit substantial amount, and I want to fix it. That's what the bill amendment does.
I just want to say that when we look at those, we're not looking at what they're actually making. We're not looking at where they are in the range. We're looking at where our midpoint is in comparison to the market. That 99,000 midpoint, that's what we're looking at. So I'm not looking at where the captains are within that range when we do those analyses.
But Sam, I understand what you're saying, but none of them make 99,000. Not one of them makes that much.
Mr. Ehlum, go ahead. So I appreciate the fact that you're making this point. Mr. Cronin's made the point as well. What you want to do, and what you want to do, I think we all want to do, so rather than continue to debate whether that's mid-range or whether it's the right thing, we're going to give them the raises that everybody's seeking. Can we please just vote to give them the raises that they're seeking and stop this back and forth?
I agree with you. I didn't know that you guys, I wanted you to understand the numbers.
We're good. If we can just move on, no offense.
Let's do it. No, I agree. That's good.
I don't think this needs to be done publicly. I think we're good.
That's good.
So I'd like to get to where we want to end up, if we can, please.
You have a motion.
Yes.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And before we vote, we'll discuss. Mr. White, go ahead.
I don't agree with the amendment. I agree with the endeavor, but I don't agree with amendments, so I'll vote no on the amendment.
Mr. County Executive.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, the amendment is to transfer the money from the parks?
I don't go for that.
Is that the amendment?
Or other suitable appropriations.
I don't, I don't.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm confused about what the amendment is. There were different options given here.
Mr. County Executive.
My understanding is, can I ask Rory here, since he drafted it? Is there two, is there one amendment to take it out of the budget and then another amendment later to put it back in? So this is to take the money out of one place?
There is one amendment which is adding three lines to the budget. The first line is going to transfer the money to the, from the Parks Department. The second line creates this police leadership fund, and the third line transfers the money into it. I believe that's how it works.
But that's not this one?
That is what this amendment is currently, before the council.
So it does all those things?
It does all of those in one amendment.
Okay, okay. All right, now, on this issue, obviously, and I won't try not to repeat what I said last week or last meeting. If you all do not like the formula that we're using, we need to go ahead and talk about doing a different formula.
I agree.
If you think that we should be putting more money into salaries generally, which this amendment does, takes it from parks, whatever, that's obviously something, you know, we should explore.
Right.
But again, and I'm not saying we're going back to the, we're going back to the bad old days here, but... old days here, but in the bad old days, this whole process was totally subjective, and elected officials gave, gave out salaries based on, you know, who they, how much they wanted people to get. And I'm not suggesting we're going back to that point, but we're going back in that direction. And I, I have, you know, like I said, we spent half a million dollars setting up this whole, this whole system and this whole formula that we have. And again, if we need to change the formula, fine, but we can't get in a situation where we have a formula, and then we go ahead and we figure it out, and in spite of the formula, there are some people who, we, somebody on the council thinks, you know, well, this, this person isn't getting the right amount. Well, let's talk about, maybe there's something wrong with the formula. But to simply ignore the process we've been going through here and, and looking every year at a new group, and to now, you know, go from people that, you know, the 90%, to go ahead and skip over everybody with 91, 92, 93, to go ahead and fix what we perceive as a problem with people who are at 94% is not going to be, it's just not in keeping with the system we've set up here. And, and I don't know how many people were, were jumping over.
Yeah.
But the fact of the matter is, everybody has come to expect in the last couple of years that every, in every so many years, they're going to be reevaluated. And, you know, I just, I just can, I just want you to know that I, that I don't support this, and I hope, I hope that, that you don't, but if, if this doesn't pass and you want to next year, you know, start working on a different formula, which you think is more fair, that we are certainly willing to do that. But I don't think what you want next year is the day that the budget comes out, all of a sudden, the next day, you get phone calls from 1,100 county employees.
Right.
Saying, hey, I don't, I don't think, I just don't think I'm getting enough, and I think, you know, I think mine ought to be a little bit more. So just please consider that when you vote.
Nancy.
Yeah, I agree with Steve. I mean, this is really, when I started out a little over a year ago, we did the budget first thing, and I was like, what the heck is going on? So hopefully I'm a little bit more aware of what's going on here. And to me, this is kind of like an ad hoc thing. Okay, so next year, you know, somebody decides that the healthcare people need to get more. The next year, it's, you know, whoever, the maintenance people need to get more. And so we just trashed the whole procedure that we build up that is based on some kind of irrational thing where we take a third of the people every year, and we take a look at where they are in terms of other surrounding areas, and we decide if we need to make an adjustment. And I think with respect to the police, I mean, I am a huge supporter of the police. You can ask any policeman. I was a judge for 26 years, and they voted me to be their most favorite person, which is probably not good for defendants, but this has nothing to do with the police. This has to do with consistency and fairness. And as I understand that the lieutenants, they're a group that is being reevaluated this year, so they're going to get that. And then I guess in another year, maybe the sergeants will, or maybe the captains will. But I think to just trash the whole system because, you know, we're advocating for a particular group of employees is, is basically just not fair. I am not in favor of taking money from the Parks Department and putting it in here. It may be $350,000. That's $350,000 every year we're going to be taking out of the Parks Department, and I don't think that money was intended to be used for this. So I'm just telling you that I am not in favor of the way this is happening.
Mr. White.
I agree with Nancy. I come from a police family, and, and, you know, I advocate police all the time, but I think this is the wrong way to do it, the wrong time to do it, and I just cannot support it.
Okay, Mr. Cronin first, then Mr. Brazel.
Okay. The system we've got now don't work. Half a million bucks for Evergreen software in this report, and it ain't working. We ran into this first with Highway Department. They had a 70% turnover in the guys that plow the snow and patch the potholes, okay? Highway Department came to me and Mr. Hammond. We found some money for it. We got that fixed. We're doing exactly what this report says. The report says exercise small salary surveys as needed to assess the market competitors and hard-to-fill classifications and classifications with retention issues, and make adjustments to the pay grade as signed as needed. That's what it says. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying, they're trying to give the lieutenants more money. The biggest problem, and our system hasn't identified, is with sergeants. Sergeants are getting paid 20% less than the surrounding area, 20%. I sent you all this information prior to the meeting, Nancy.
I know.
And we're already spending, already, already spending over a million, about a million dollars a year out of county parks money to police anyway. So an extra 350 ain't that much when they spend money like drunken sailors at the Parks Department. I'm sorry, but this aggravates me. These guys need to get paid right. That's the bottom dollar. Let's get it over with.
The reason why I explained, Mike, this whole equation is we're not getting the same information we're supposed to get. Mr. Ehlum talks about the formula. They're not being consistent on the information they're giving us. They're saying 90, the, the study they gave us says 90%. They're not at 90%, guys. Can't you read this stuff? They're at 40%. They use the equation 90% to benefit them, and they, they say the assistant directors are at 50%? How are these, how are these captains at more than 50% when you can see the pays based on the actual pay? You guys need to use some critical thinking skills and just quit following along all the time. Our, our job is to ask questions.
I agree.
We need to be at the service, we just need to ask questions. And our job is to review the budget and look at things. When there's problems and discrepancy, that's our job. And I agree with Mr. Cronin. This has been going on for years with these guys, and all the crap they had put up with, and just, you're right, the truck drivers, the snow, the snow truck drivers, they were all quitting. How, we trained these guys. We spent a ton of money training these guys, and they could be leaving. You don't know. I mean, and the lieutenants are going to make more than the captains now? It doesn't make any sense.
Mr. Chairman.
The 350,000, first of all, Mr. Ehlum, we pulled all the park rangers out of the parks, right? We pulled them out. Remember, they used to carry guns, they were commissioned officers, and we pulled them out of the parks. We have 3,000 acres of parks. The idea was, is to beef up the police patrol in these parks. Well, these parks are getting vandalized more, there's more crime in the parks, there's more problems in the parks. Why aren't we using the parks money for security in those parks, especially down in our area when we've got 2,000 acres of parks? They don't have armed officers going out. That way, that funding could be used legitimately, like Mr. Cronin suggested. And that was actually the premise of doing that. It didn't actually work out so well, though.
Mr. Chairman.
May I inquire, Mr. Brazel? Are you suggesting that they are trying to mislead you all? Samantha?
I am absolutely, Steve. I called you up, and I told you the equation on the math that Sam gave me is not being the same.
So you think they are intentionally trying to mislead you?
I'm not sure who.
And you think?
I haven't told you the, Steve, you can read the letter. It's plain as day. They used the pay range for the, for the captains, and they used the actual salary for the executives, the county executives. So they're, if they're more important, they are at 50%.
I thought she just explained that.
She was not really understanding. I didn't cut it off. I was trying to explain, we don't need to, it's in the latter, Steve. And I tried to explain that to you. You're not using the same equation. You're calling them at 90%. They're not at 90%. They're at 40%.
Uh, can you try again?
Okay. Jennifer, give us.
I, I, I'm concerned if you think that they are purposely trying to mislead anybody.
Yes, Chair.
They used the pay range, let me explain this one more time. It says this in the letter, and I went through the numbers, I went through the math. They went through the pay range, and they produced the average, which is $99,000. They said that on that sheet you guys gave us, 99,000 average pay. That's the average of the, of the range. They actually have an average of 94,000, okay? They use the county executive's average to save pay range, and they use their actual pay to make them 50%. So for the captains, they use the average of the pay range. For the assistant directors, they use the actual pay. What I was trying to tell you guys, if they use the actual pay of the captains, it would bring them down to less than 50%, just like they did for them. It's very simple.
But isn't the information we're getting from the other areas in terms of pay ranges? Yeah, we're comparing pay ranges to pay ranges.
Correct. We've now actually asked them everything, though. We've, we've asked them pay range to pay range, and we've actually now asked salary to salary. The difference between question one and the question two are two different things, and your 90 to 40, 50 are two different things. That 90% is still talking about that compa ratio, which is comparing the percentage of our midpoint to the midpoints of other ranges from other jurisdictions. Item related to the Assistant Director of Administrations on your response to the question you asked on number two is that those positions are currently within 50% of the existing pay range. I don't have the numbers on me, but I'm not going to even dispute that captains indeed could well be 40% of the way through the range of their current pay range. Sam, is that sound correct? No, I.
Just do the math.
But what I'm saying to you, sir, is I probably agree with you. I don't have the numbers exactly on me at the moment, but let's take our four captains. They hypothetically are in the 90s.
Ninety, forty thousand.
Then they are indeed at a percentage through that range that you're suggesting. But what we're looking at in this study, and what we do as part of this study, it's a two-step concept of what we do all the time. Step one is always ensuring that our midpoints stay at market. That ensures that when we hire somebody new at the start of the pay range, that we're trying to stay competitive. Second piece of step two is moving people through the range. The only thing we do right now, I'm sorry. The only thing we do right now to move people through the range is whatever money you all might have available, we move that percentage by one or 2%. Now, back before, the time that I got hired with the county, when sales tax was increasing at rates of like 12, 15% a year, those percentages for which you were moving people through those ranges each year because you had more money were considerably greater than they are today. So when we only have enough money to be able to afford a 1% or 2% merit raise, moving people through that range, and we're also trying to stay competitive with the midpoint, so we move the market, or we move that whole grid 1%, we also give somebody a 1% or 2% raise, so you're never moving through that range. And that's that component that we all recognize from conversation with Councilman Ehlum, that you really want to start tackling. How do we find either more money or reallocate resources, or as the county executive was pointing out this evening, if you all say to the people who build out the budget every year that your number one priority is X percentage of pay range to be awarded by merit to move people through the range, then that's where we start. But right now, we start with doing one thing first, which is awarding the grid movement so that we keep everybody's midpoint at market, and then we deal with all of the other budgetary requests, while trying to identify a percentage raise that is appropriate based on everything else going on in the marketplace, which this year, our recommendation was a 3% merit raise, and I'm blanking on it. Thanks. So I think we're still talking about a couple of different things all in one, which I know can be very confusing, but that indeed, 50% through the range is different than a 90% compa ratio.
Thank you.
This might be something.
Mr. Chair, I moved it when we called for the question.
I think it's premature for that. I have one final thing. This is the comparative analysis that we were given. The word pay range is not in this study. That's what he's doing. If you ask about if it's deceptive or not, the numbers aren't, the columns aren't identified, there's not a mention of pay range in here. Bottom line is, he's got, the guys in, in blue are not getting paid correctly. It's our job as a, as a council, under the charter, to set compensation levels, and I don't care if 1,100 county employees do complain to me. I'll, I'll look at it, and I'll take the time to work on it, just like I did on the Highway Department workers and these workers, because that's our damn job, okay? That's all I got to say.
One more thing, Terry. You guys are talking about pay, you're talking about pay increases. This letter, I sent you guys this letter, you read it. They gave 17 pay increases administratively without coming to the council because they felt it was necessary. 17 of them, mid, mid, mid-season, not, not off, off, off-site, I should. 17 pay raises, county councilor's office, facilities, finance, HR, prosecutor, communications, county councilor. There's three in the county councilor's office. DOC, facilities, 17 of them. Raises approved by administration does not go through the county council. So last year, there were 17 mid, mid-quarter. So John, you're wrong. You guys are wrong. Whenever they decide something goes up, they do it administratively. So it's, the council is asking, two of us at least, is asking that they get a pay increase that what they deserve, proof based on the numbers that, that we ran, and like Mr. Cronin said, the formula that they use, I don't trust it, and it doesn't work, and, and our job is to make these kind of reviews.
Okay, on the floor right now is an amendment that Mr. Cronin made that would amend Bill Number 4905, and the amendment was second. So I think what we will do is, we will actually have a roll call vote on whether or not to accept the amendment. Okay?
Okay. I'll go ahead and just call the roll then. To approve the amendment, Councilwoman Schneider.
No.
Councilman White.
No.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum.
No.
Councilman Hollander.
No.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Okay, the amendment that has been proposed for Bill Number 4905 has failed, so now we will actually vote on Bill Number 4905 as it stands.
Bill Number 4905, an ordinance adopting and appropriating the fiscal year 2021 budget for St. Charles County, Missouri, and amending ordinance number 20-089 to increase only the county's contribution to group medical insurance. Councilman, Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
No.
Councilman Brazel.
No.
Councilman Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Okay, Bill Number 4905 passes. Next bill for final passage is Bill Number 4906.
Bill Number 4906, an ordinance amending sections 115.020, 115.220, 115.222, 115.305, 115.320, 115.410, 115.430, 115.670, 115.705, 115.710, 115.721, 115.722, 115.725, of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, and deleting and replacing all of section 115.720, OSCCMO, all concerning the personnel administration plan, including but not limited to benefits.
Okay, any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Bill Number 4906, an ordinance amending sections 115.020, 115.220, 115.222, 115.305, 115.320, 115.320, 115.410, 115.430, 115.670, 115.705, 115.710, 115.721, 115.722, 115.725, 115.740, 115.765 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, and deleting and replacing all of section 115.720, OSCCMO, all concerning the personnel administration plan, including but not limited to benefits. Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
No.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4906 passes. Next bill for final consideration is bill number 4907.
Bill number 4907, an ordinance authorizing the county executive who is designated to execute a program services contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for amendment number one to contract CS 200832001 for violent death and overdose death surveillance reimbursement.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Bill number 4907, an ordinance authorizing the county executive who is designated to execute a program services contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for amendment number one to contract number CS 200832001 for violent death and overdose death surveillance reimbursement. Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4907 passes. Next up is bill number 4908.
Bill number 4908, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the University of Missouri Extension Council of St. Charles County to provide educational programs and services at a cost to the county of $100,000.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 4908, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the University of Missouri Extension Council of St. Charles County to provide educational programs and services at a cost to the county of $100,000. Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4908 passes. Next up is bill number 4909.
Bill number 4909, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements for advocacy and lobbying services.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 4909, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements for advocacy and lobbying services. Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4909 passes. Next up is bill number 4910.
Bill number 4910, an ordinance designating and recognizing the Greater St. Charles Convention and Visitors Bureau as the state fiscal year 2022 through 2024 representative destination marketing organization for tourism in St. Charles County is required for participation in the Missouri Division of Tourism's Cooperative Marketing Program for the state fiscal year 2022 through 2024 funding cycle.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 4910, an ordinance designating and recognizing the Greater St. Charles Convention and Visitors Bureau as the state fiscal year 2022 through 2024 representative destination marketing organization for tourism in St. Charles County is required for participation in the Missouri Division of Tourism's Cooperative Marketing Program for the state fiscal year 2022 through 2024 funding cycle. Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Bill number 4910 passes.
Next bill for final passage, bill number 4911.
Bill number 4911, an ordinance amending the 2020 budget adopted by ordinance 19-108 by providing related supplemental appropriations to the budgets of the General Fund, Transportation Fund, Election Maintenance Fund, Family Services and Justice Fund, Drug Enforcement Fund, Emergency Communications Fund, Fleet Management Fund, Regional Medical Examiner Fund, Housing Assistance Program Fund, Coronavirus Relief Fund, and Self Insurance Fund.
Questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Cronin.
$6 million here. Use taxes, parks use tax will generate $2 million more money in '21, according to Bob's figures, and we can't afford $275,000 to fix the pay. That's my comment, and you're going to hear it all next year until those guys get paid what they deserve to be paid.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Bill number 4911, an ordinance amending the 2020 budget adopting, adopted by ordinance 19-108 by providing supplemental, related supplemental appropriations to the budgets of the General Fund, Transportation Fund, Election Maintenance Fund, Family Services and Justice Fund, Drug Enforcement Fund, Emergency Communications Fund, Fleet Management Fund, Regional Medical Examiner Fund, Housing Assistance Program Fund, Coronavirus Relief Fund, and Self Insurance Fund. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilman Cronin.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
No.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hollander.
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4911 passes. The final bill for final consideration is bill 4912.
Bill number 4912, an ordinance approving the transportation improvement plan for fiscal years 2021 through 2023 and corresponding intergovernmental agreements.
Questions or comments?
I have a question for John Grayson in this one. John, does this plan, does this, what we're approving, doesn't include the River Point development or the I-70 project on, with the one-way out roads, right? This is just the small regional ones, I think, correct? Small regional improvements like the street in Wentzville or whatnot. This doesn't include the transportation improvement plan. Does it also include the River Point that we're going to be voting on for the next meeting? Does it also include the 70 corridor from Fairgrounds to Cave Springs?
Yeah, so our transportation improvement plan is, covers all of the expenditures from our half-cent transportation sales tax, which would be the local roads, River Point, and improvements on I-70, gateway green light program. All of that's included within the tip.
So this is also going to include River Point, even though we've got a separate item we're voting on?
So you have a separate contract. So this has included in the planning documents recommended by the county road board and the attached agreements. That agreement for River Point is in the tip, but it came to us as an economic development project, so the contract followed up later.
The tip plan that we sent, that sent us were the pictures of the projects. I don't recall River Point being in there, okay? But if it is in there, maybe I overlooked it. But my question to River Point is, that, you're, we talked about it when River Point comes up, but your summary says it's a $28 million transportation problem. It's not. It's a $28 million project. It's a $14 million transportation project. Seven million coming from county, and what the problem is, is it's internal roads within that development. Have we ever funded internal roads within a development? I know we've funded through roads where they're going through a project because it creates better flow for the entire area, but this is a one road going in. I got a problem with that plan if we're spending $7 million to prop up River Point's streets, okay, when that should be the developer or the city of St. Charles paying for the internal roads within that development.
So the 7 million or the 14, so you're correct, it's, we're 50/50 with the city, so it's $14 million worth of roads, seven and seven. 28 is their total overall development cost. The road that they're primarily, that includes is the extension of Lombard, Lombardo Street, which is the one that extends through the streets of St. Charles.
No problem with those. The problem is with the internal ones. I asked, I asked Councilman Hammond and Brazel if they ever remember seeing us approve a development, internal roads within a development. Neither one could recall that, okay? Like with GM, for instance, the million, the million square foot warehouse out there. We paid for the connecting roads to that, and that's with the city of Wentzville on a tip project. But we didn't pay for those internal roads inside that development, okay?
We didn't pay for the others. Incorrect. I mean, we don't pay for private streets, so we would pay for the public streets. So this would be more similar to the streets of Caledonia and O'Fallon.
That was an extension of the outer road project, too, at Caledonia. It had served two purposes. I questioned that. Not only did it serve Caledonia, but it also provided an extension to the outer road. This thing doesn't do anything. It serves that development, and it is an internal street within that development, and if that's part of the tip, then I'm a no on the tip, okay? But if that's, if you're telling me that's a no, if that's part of the tip plan.
Yeah, that would be part of the tip, and you're correct, the roads within this development are different than, say, Caledonia, if you look at that example of, does it connect point A and B and allow for that through traffic? They will be public streets included in that that are needed to support the development as well as move traffic through that area of town, but they are not new arterial roadways like on the streets of Caledonia project where you're truly creating that arterial connection. So there is a subtle difference there.
Yeah, well, I mean, to me, I think you're setting a bad precedent funding internal streets on a private development, okay, number one. Number two is, city of St. Charles hasn't been too gracious to us anyway. They took advantage of us on the Boeing expansion and that parks situation down there. I think they're, we gave them a sweetheart deal in that building across the street a few years ago, and it doesn't look like they're going to reciprocate on that. So I'm a no if that's part of it. If you want to remove that, then that's fine, but if not, I'm not going to pay for internal streets inside. The taxpayers that pay that half percent transportation tax, it's supposed to be for making traffic flow better in this county. It ain't supposed to be made for providing internal streets within a development in the city of St. Charles. Let that developer in the city of St. Charles pay for those internal streets.
The tax?
John, I'm sorry. I was just looking at one of the attachments to the bill, and you know, you've got all of these different projects listed on different page. River Point is at the top of page four, and so I was a little confused, too. So if I'm looking at, I'm looking at page four of that addendum, and it talks about the fiscal year for 2021 is a million dollars, 22 is 3 million, 23 is 3 million, and it says project limits are Freedens Road and I-70 along east side of Arena Parkway and South Main Street. So, so are these, are these like internal inside of the River Point, or are they just along the arteries to get to that area from Arena Parkway and South Main? Or do you know?
Well, they're proposing is a little bit both. So on that South River Road section, they're proposing that would be converted from four lanes that it is today to a five-lane road. There are some traffic signal upgrades that they're looking at, as well as some new road construction with the extension of Lombardo into the development, some other roads that will cross through the development is also their public.
So what, so what's the extent of the, of South Main Street that's going to be affected by that?
South.
It's going to, yeah, well, I'm just looking at the description on project limits.
I think that South Main, it's the intersection of South Main and that Lombardo extension, there's some signal work and intersection improvements there with some turn lanes and various components like that.
Or South Main, then goes into Arena Parkway? Is that what you're talking about?
It'd be closer to, if you're going through the streets of St. Charles.
Yeah, okay.
And the kind that hits South Main right there, kind of right currently dead ends.
Uh-huh.
That will be made a four-way intersection, and so there'll need to be traffic control and signals and some additional turn lanes in that area as well.
Okay, so these aren't like streets or roads within River Point. These are just surrounding areas to flow the traffic into that area.
And I think it's going to include both. So there'll be external.
But we don't know exactly what.
If you read bill 4914, which is coming up after this, it's very clear what it says.
I did read it, but I'll read it again.
Yeah, well, I'll just tell you, it says, "The extension of Lombard Street, reconstruction of the old South River Road, and construction of internal development roads." That's what I got a problem with. I don't have a problem with South Lombard Street or South River Road. Those are publicly used roads. Internal development roads should be paid by the developer or the city, not county transportation sales tax money.
So that's in the next bill? Okay, thank you.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong here, though. What we're looking at is approving the transportation improvement plan for 2021, 23. Basically, this is, we're approving the plan, but each specific project then comes before us individually. Is that correct or not?
So the, the plan will include all the projects, and then there's a contract associated between us and the jurisdiction that's managing the project, and that's why this one is separate. You have the, the economic development application that came from the city, and that's in a separate bill. The other ones that are in the plan, yeah, they were included in that because they're generally more those standard type of road projects that we see in the tip. But you are correct, I just want to make sure that everyone realize, yeah, there are some typical improvements that you see on the arterial and collector roadways, improving signals, improving, adding lanes, South River Road, Lombard Extension, but there are some smaller roads that they're, they're including in that tally, so that is a distinction here. This tax had three priorities that were established. One was the construction.
Yes. Go ahead, county executive.
John, you mentioned New Caledonia. Is that, is that service road operational now that we're connecting to?
It will eventually be. No, there's no service.
It's later on. I mean, initially, this project does dead end. Eventually, it will connect, the service road will connect to it.
At Caledonia?
Yeah. I think a better example might be the Lindwood Commons. Lindwood Commons, that section of road we did there and connected, basically connected to Boone Avenue. I mean, it, it, you know, became part of the grid, so to speak, for St. Charles. We looked at New Caledonia drafting the language that you're going to be looking at later on because we wanted to stay as consistent as we could with what we did out there. So that's why we have the language in there about, you know, about TIFs and other, you know, taking our tax money, and that's, that's what the Lindwood thing was about, and to a certain extent, that's what this is about, even New Caledonia. I mean, we, as you all know, everybody knows, we've, we've got money in some funds, but not in others. We do have money in our transportation fund. We don't have enough money in our general fund to do, to do raises and whatever, and that's why we went to the city on the Lindwood thing and got them to agree, no TIFs, don't take any of our sales tax revenue, and we'll build you the road. And we're kind of doing the same thing here, and you'll see when you get to that next bill, there's some restrictions on them, that they're not going to go ahead and take our general fund money in return for us doing this project.
But these roads aren't part of the grid. They go nowhere. They go to an island, where Lindwood is part of the grid. New Caledonia extends the grid on the outer roads. This is just going to the island. It's, it's just a bad, bad deal, or you know the way I'd look at it. And if we can move money from transportation improvement sales tax to the general fund or whatever for doing this, but we can't move it elsewhere to take care of the people, it just sets a bad precedent.
So the transportation sales tax, when it was established, had three priorities. Construction of new arterial roadways, and that's been its primary focus, and we've been using that for building roads like Mexico Road, improvements on the state system. The second was fixing congestion and safety issues. Still our bread and butter. That's, you know, we do a lot of that. The third priority is economic development, and that's what this project falls into. It has a separate application that was submitted for economic development, and the conditions on that money are, they have to be road projects. They have to be public road projects because it's a very distinction. We aren't only going to spend public money on public roads, but the desired outcome is not necessarily traffic relief. And in this case, when you read the contract, and that's one reason why it's a separate bill, not only does it include that we're not going to, they're not going to use tax incentives that are going to take away money from our general fund, but in this one specifically is about creation of high-paying jobs. And if they don't create those high-paying jobs, they have to pay us back. And so I agree with you, this River Point is a very, it's slightly different project than what we've had in the past. The road improvements are maybe not as strong as some of the other ones, but the economic development piece that they're promising, the job creation of higher-paying jobs, makes this project stand apart, and that's what, you know, you read that separate agreement, that provision as well as not hitting our sales tax revenue make it a strong project to support, and that's why the river board recommended it.
Before the next meeting, can you tell us how much the internal roads are costing of that, of that, of that $14 million? And you also probably ought to change the summary for that bill 4914 because it's wrong. It says it's $28 million worth of roads, and we're only paying, we're only paying 7 million of it. It's really $14 million worth of roads, and we're paying 7 million. But I'd like to know the breakdown of how much of that money is going for internal roads that are helping primarily the developer in the city of St. Charles, and how much is helped, we spent on Lombard and, and South River because those help the entire community.
Yeah, we will, we'll give you a breakdown. We'll do it before the meeting. I'll have Amanda send it out to you via email. We'll send it to Donna, and she can send out to the council on the breakdown of the roads that they are proposing in more detail on the actual improvements themselves.
Yep.
But yeah, I, I think the key, though, is I want to make sure that it's, and this is an economic development project, please read the contract. There's a lot of time put into it, very detailed on the payback and what triggers that payback, other funds, and the quality of jobs and the type of jobs that we're seeking here. A lot of what Scott Draknik talked about, what these are looking to be healthcare, IT, financial services, those type of jobs are very specific within the contract that we're seeking to move and attract into this development for our investment of $7 million. And if they don't achieve those, we get the money paid back, and then there's a, there's a compilation of how that money is paid back in, in the agreement. So it is a unique contract, so I appreciate you for pointing it out, and it's something that if we do here, we, obviously, we're going to want to continue that precedent, so appreciate the council's time.
Thank you. We will now call the roll on bill number 4912.
For the record, on bill number 4912, revised exhibits had been received, and they reflect revised contracts with municipalities and new language in sections six and nine.
Thank you, Claire.
Bill number 4912, an ordinance approving the transportation improvement plan for fiscal plan for fiscal years twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-three and corresponding intergovernmental agreements. Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
No.
Councilman Brazel?
No.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, Bill number forty-nine twelve passes. Now we move on to bills for introduction, beginning with Bill number forty-nine thirteen.
Bill number forty-nine thirteen, requested by Mike Earlbert, sponsored by John White. An ordinance setting final special assessments on properties within, within the Saratoga Heights Sanitation Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District, finding that the Saratoga Heights Sanitary Sewer Neighborhood Improvement District project is completed, and assessing the cost of such projects against the properties liable therefore, and providing for the collection of such final special assessments.
Questions or comments? Okay, we move on to Bill number forty-nine fourteen for introduction.
Bill number forty-nine fourteen, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Charles for use of St. Charles County Transportation Sales Tax Funds for road improvements needed to support the River Point development project.
Okay, I believe that, you know, we will have questions prepared for next meeting on this particular bill, and also probably some more information on these specifics. Okay, Bill number forty-nine fifteen for introduction, please.
Bill number forty-nine fifteen, requested by Kurt Friss, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the city of Weldon Spring for certain law enforcement services, including patrol services and enforcement of certain municipal ordinances related to police services.
Questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Cronin?
There are two phases this, phase A or B or phase one or two. Basically, what it is, it's a great deal if the FBI accepts our plans, but if the FBI doesn't accept the plans, then we wasted a bunch of money on the plans that we could have spent elsewhere. So the question I've got about this, and I asked for the exhibits, I think it's exhibit A and B prior to the meeting, and they said they weren't done, is we need to look at this real hard because part of it is reimbursable by the FBI. Actually, the whole thing will be reimbursable by FBI if they accept the plans.
Mr. Chairman?
But we're gambling a certain amount of money whether they're going to accept the plans or not.
I think that's actually the next bill, if I'm not mistaken. This is, uh,
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
City Weldon Springs, but that's, all right.
I save you time on next bill.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments on Bill forty-nine fifteen? Okay, now we move on to Bill number forty-nine sixteen.
Bill number forty-nine sixteen, requested by Chief Kurt Friss, sponsored by Terry Hollander. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute intergovernmental agreements with the Federal Bureau of Investigation to provide for the renovation, construction, and joint use services of the existing St. Charles County Police Training Facility.
Councilman, may I answer a little bit of what you just remarked upon?
Sure.
So the FBI will reimburse us in full for the study. If we don't have the agreement, we won't even ask you to pass it, but the agreement will reflect that they are paying us for that study. And what, what will happen if the agreement goes forward is we will have an amount at the end of that study that they're willing to pay to expand some things at the range that they will be paying for. Additional lanes for shooting rifle range at a hundred feet, a hundred yards. I'm not, obviously not a weapons person, so I apologize, for a hundred yards, councilman. Okay, thank you. And a simulation house, which would be a tremendous advantage for us, and we wanted for some years. So those things also will benefit the cities that use our range because by the FBI paying for those additional ranges and letting us move some of our time off of the existing range, we create additional capacity for the other municipalities who are sorely strapped with the amount of time as their police forces grow, that they would like to be able to use the range. So the initial risk for the study is virtually nonexistent, and we have seen and talked to other jurisdictions where the FBI has done a similar thing. They have never welched on the deal. And so at, at the point that we have the study done, then we'll actually know what the full extent of the cost for everything we would like to do down there, and we'll know whether or not they can cover the full cost of that, or whether or not we have to take a step back on how much of it we can get done.
Joe, and does the FBI currently use our range from time to time?
They do not. The FBI currently uses the range at the city of St. Louis.
Okay.
All right. Last bill for introduction is Bill number forty-nine seventeen.
Bill number forty-nine seventeen, requested by Chief Kurt Friss, sponsored by Terry Hollander. An ordinance rescinding ordinance nineteen dash zero-seven-seven and requiring the fingerprinting of licensees and concealed carry security officer, security officer, watchman applicant for a tow truck business license, and applicant for a tow truck operator license for criminal history record information from the Missouri State Highway Patrol and Federal Bureau of Investigation.
Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, that concludes bills for introduction. Does anyone have any announcements or miscellaneous?
I have a quick miscellaneous. Mr. Brazel, I'm sorry for cutting off your discussion earlier because I agreed with you and Mr. Cronin on, and, and I thought we were all on the same page. I think we do need to get these guys paid. After listening to Nancy and John talk, changed my mind about pulling it from Parks. So I'm still on board with you on getting these guys paid because they need to get paid, and your numbers are right, and they're short on what we owe them, and we need to figure out a way to make it right. I'm thinking through a couple ideas, so I'm willing to work with you to see if we can find other ways in that budget.
It's, the county's budget is fundamentally flawed because it relies too much on sales tax. Work and motor starts are doing this, online purchases are doing this.
I agree.
General revenue, general fund revenues doing this, parks revenues going like this, two million bucks next year. Two million dollars more in parks money. We can't do three fifty for cops. We made a mistake. So we can revisit it at a later time.
Any other announcements, miscellaneous? County executive?
Mr. Chairman, anybody? Anybody? Didn't see it, but there's a story on Channel Five at five o'clock.
We have Channel Five back now?
Yes, it came back.
I didn't, I didn't even miss it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we actually do, but there's a story about Tim Lomar is on with a reporter, and, and they've determined now that the John Watson death was the, was accidental, really. I guess the medical examiner determined, what, unknown or?
Really?
Anyway, the, the, the bottom line is they've not found any, any, any evidence of foul play, which.
Okay.
How should, how should I, how should I describe that?
The, the medical examiner found not that it was accidental. They, they found that it was indeterminate, basically.
Indeterminate.
Indeterminate, yeah.
Okay.
Gotcha.
But there's some closure, at least for the family at this point. So I just thought, you hadn't seen that, I want to make sure you were aware of it.
If you guys don't know, this is North Star coming out tonight, first time in eight hundred years, the Christmas star.
I think you missed it.
We missed it there. Oh, we missed it.
I don't think we could have made it either way. Okay, in, in conclusion here, I'd like to, first of all, you know, wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and also just point out the, the fact that this year's been a very trying year for us in a lot of different ways, and I'm not talking just about the pandemic, but also, you know, the various issues that have come before us this year and which people are very passionate about. And I, I appreciate your patience, and I appreciate the fact that we've been able to, you know, get through these things, and, and of course, you know, not without, you know, some disagreement. And as we move forward next year, I would like to think that things will be easier, but I'm not really sure that they will be. Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I will simply say there were several meetings. I was glad we had an old school teacher in, in the chair, and were able to, to get an unruly crowd under control.
There were times that the, the rowdiness reminded me back in the day, you know, so. Thank you, folks. All right. Motion to adjourn. Mr. White, no, I'm Mr. White, sorry.
I just want to give credit where credit's due. There's somebody in, in our country that doesn't get as much credit for this vaccine, and that's our president, and I thank you, Mr. President, for bringing it forward so fast.
Yeah.
Maybe that, what's that? Motion to adjourn?
Tag it.
Okay. Thank you, folks.